Good evening and welcome to the June 10th, 2014 workshop of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Bellbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome your viewers, thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present to you, your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Alan Fraley, Charleville Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Tom Keger, Gastonia Township.
At this time, this meeting's called to order. Commissioner Williams will deliver the invocation and Commissioner Price will lead us in the pledge. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. Fall's stand. Before we pray tonight, if we can have a moment of silence in recognition of the tragic accident of Ms. Ariel Monet Reed, Highland School of Technology, and our prayers are with that community and their family, and our hearts go out to that community. So if we can have a moment of silence before invocation. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, God, and the ability we have to meet and assemble in a free democracy and express our opinion. And, Lord, I pray that you would be with us tonight in every decision that's made. I pray for our Board, that, Lord, that you would help us and guide us in our decision-making process, that we would do what's best for our community, our citizens, our students, our kids. Lord, I pray for law enforcement. I pray for educators. I pray for our first responders, all the people that serve our community, God. I pray a special blessing upon them. And, Lord, I thank you for everybody that's come out tonight, or those that couldn't make it. Lord, I pray that you protect us from the storm. I pray for our community, and I pray that you would just help everything tonight to be done decently and in order, as he would have it to be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Our first item is Proclamations, Commendations, Awards, and Certificate. First up is Commissioner Keger to commend Mr. Will Blaylock at Forest View upon being named the North Carolina High School Athletic Association 3A Golf Individual State Champion.
Chairman, if I can, I'm going to ask the whole team to come on up with Will. Will did get an individual award, but he's part of the team, and come on up, guys. Right back behind me so the camera can get you. Good evening, Will. Teammates. Now, can you join him? Yeah, we feel shut out. We see your picture all the time in the paper with all the scholarships, don't we? First, I'm going to recognize the team itself. We've got two commendations, and I'll get right to it. Whereas on May 13th, 2014, the Forest View High School Men's Golf Team captured their third straight 3A Golf State Championship Title at the 29th Annual North Carolina High School Athletic Association 3A State Championships at the Foxfire Golf Course in Pinehurst, North Carolina. And whereas, Forest View scored an outstanding 299 on the final day of the state tournament to take its third consecutive state title. With a two-day score of 600, the Jags finished 11 shots ahead of the runner-up in team standings. Senior Will Blaylock, North Carolina State University signee, scored a tie-breaking eagle on his final hole to capture the 3A Individual State Championship. And whereas, the Jaguars capped off a strong 2014 regular season, scoring 1,477 over the course of the season and finishing first in the Big South 2A-3A Conference by 27 strokes. It was the team's 10th consecutive conference championship and its 14th in the school's 16-year history. Harrison Frye, senior and Coastal Carolina University signee, clutched the Big South 2A-3A Conference Golfer of the Year Award with a 282 over his best four rounds of the season for an average of 70.5. And whereas, retiring head coach Ken Beatty was named Big South Coach Conference of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends and applauds the following members of the Forest View High School Jaguar Men's Golf Team for their successful season. And I'll go ahead and, Will, if you help me, I'm going to present you with the first one. This is the team recognition. And then if you would, we'll pass one out. Go to Will Booker. Back here. My neighbor Madison Duffy. There we go. Austin Good. There you go. Dylan Helms. Drew Jurz. There you go, Drew. Coach Beatty's not here. Don Gans, again, is not here. You're going to take these for us? I want to congratulate each and every one of you, and if you stay here while we do one more. Congratulations. All right. This is an individual commendation presented to Will Blaylock. And whereas, Mr. Blaylock, Forest View High School Senior and North Carolina State University signee, won the Individual State Championship Title at the 29th Annual North Carolina High School Athletic Association 3A State Championships, also at the Foxfire Golf Course in Pinehurst. And whereas, Mr. Blaylock had a final round, 2 under par 70, to capture the Individual State Championship. With an eagle on his final hole, Will broke the first-place tie for the win and finished 2 under, 142, for the two-day tournament. And whereas, Mr. Blaylock wraps up his senior year with many career accolades, including a four-time All-Conference Selection and a spot as one of the three golfers on the 2013 North Carolina Boys All-State Golf Team. He was also named the Big South Conference Player of the Year as a sophomore. And whereas, (cough) excuse me, he's won numerous championships, including the Bobby Chapman Jr. Invitational in 2013, and he represented the Carolinas Golf Association in the Virginia-Carolinas Junior Team Matches in August. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends Will Blaylock for his commitment and dedication and extends its congratulation upon winning the North Carolina High School Athletic Association 3A Individual State Championship, and this also will be adopted at our next meeting. Will, congratulations on behalf of the Board.
I appreciate it.
Would anybody like to say anything? Will?
I would like to thank Gaston County for supporting us throughout the years at Forshee High School, and I'd like to thank my teammates for supporting Forshee and I throughout the past four years at Forshee.
Anybody else? Well, congratulations, guys.
Hey, gentlemen. If y'all wanted to come up here and get a team picture, was there a parent or some? I think somebody wanted one. Can you just line up here? Everybody wants a picture with Commissioner Brown. Then next is Commissioner Price, commendation to commend Ms. Carolyn Niemeyer and the Backpack Weekend Food Program Volunteers. Thank you.
Would Ms. Carolyn Niemeyer join me at the podium, along with any other Backpack Weekend Food Program They're letting you come up.
Yeah.
Really is an honor for me to do this presentation, to recognize individuals that have stepped up to support our children in the community. And this has got to be a small number compared to this list I've got.
It is.
Whereas, the mission of the Backpack Weekend Food Program is to feed children during the weekend so that they can come to school ready to learn. Ms. Carolyn Niemeyer founded the program in 2011 to ensure that Gaston County elementary students who receive free or reduced meals do not go hungry over the weekend. The program has since expanded to include middle and high school students. Whereas, along with founding partners, Holy Trinity Lutheran Church and Caramont Regional Medical Center, the program coordinates with numerous organizations, churches, and volunteers to provide backpack weekend meals to more than 740 children in 33 Gaston County schools. Whereas, the nutritionally-balanced food is selected by Caramont Health's Registered Dietitian, purchased in bulk, and delivered to the program's storehouse at Holy Trinity Lutheran Church. Volunteers pack the non-perishable food into bags and deliver it to their partner's schools for distribution to the students. And whereas, the program gained regional attention recently when Charlotte's PBS station, WTVI, featured the program in its Carolina Impact Television Show. The Backpack Weekend Food Program was selected as one of the three finalists among 70 applications for the Community Give Back Contest and received an award of $10,000 in underwriting and a video that can be used for public relations. Now therefore, be resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners recognizes and commends Carolyn Niemeyer and the many volunteers partnering churches and organizations of the Backpack Weekend Food Program, namely, Alliance for Children and Youth Communities and Schools Gaston County, All Saints Episcopal Church Gastonia, Bessemer City Merchants Association, Sinner Baptist Church Gastonia, Ebenezer United Methodist Church Gastonia, First United Methodist Church Gastonia, (applause) First United Methodist Church Mount Holly, First Presbyterian Church Charleville, First Flint Grove Baptist Church Gastonia, Forest Point Church Belmont, Holy Trinity Lutheran Church Gastonia, Lutheran Chapel Church Gastonia, Lutheran Church of Good Shepherd Mount Holly, McAdenville Wesleyan Church McAdenville, Myers Memorial Methodist Church Gastonia, Mariannetha Temple Church of God Gastonia, First Wesleyan Church Gastonia, Queen of Apostles Church Belmont, St. Mark's United Methodist Church Belmont, Redeemer Lutheran Church Gastonia, St. Mark's United Methodist Church Belmont, Walnut Grove Baptist Church Dallas, Gaston County Family YMCA Gastonia, Yorkwood Church of God Gastonia, Honor Society of Gaston Christian School Lowell, First ARP Church Gastonia, New Hope Presbyterian Church Gastonia, St. John Lutheran Church Charleville, Legacy Church Charleville, Second Baptist Church Mount Holly, Caramont Health Gastonia, Forest View High School Bible Club, First Baptist Church Cramerton, Page Power Systems Gastonia, First Wesleyan Church Bessemer City, Bethlehem Church Gastonia. For their tireless efforts in support of this worthy cause and for their vital role in ensuring that our children come to school well-fed and prepared to take the next step to brighter future, this to be adopted the 24th day of June 2014. And we would like to show the audience the video at this time. If you would roll it, please. I'm out of breath. Roll it, please. Here we go.
They may look like run-of-the-mill backpacks, but these are no ordinary bags. These packs bring home more than homework and pencils. They carry a big idea, a donation, to keep children who qualify for a free school lunch during the week from going hungry on Saturday and Sunday.
The idea that little children were hungry in this community was unacceptable to me.
Carolyn Niemeyer couldn't believe the TV news one morning in 2011 when she heard that one in 17 children near her town was hungry on the weekend.
It was very difficult, being a mother and grandmother. It was very difficult for me to think of little children not having enough to eat. And I just couldn't sleep thinking about it. And I felt like that it was something that I was going to be called to take care of in this county.
Carolyn decided to start a weekend backpack program in her town modeled after the one she'd seen on television. She started with her church and 17 schools. In less than three years, her numbers have more than doubled. Trucks come in every week, and volunteers are there to bring it all in, sort it out, and pack it up. Lorraine Campbell speaks for many here when she says they feel they've been called to help.
It's a lot of fun. It's fellowship, and we just like to laugh.
Holy Trinity Lutheran Church is the program's original partner, but there are now many more community volunteers. Each school is partnered with a local church or community group that agrees to fund their part of the program for at least one year.
The mission of this program is to keep children in school. And if they come to school less hungry, they're more likely to learn. This is what teachers tell us, that they were being asked quietly by students, "Do you have anything? Do you have any crackers in your desk?" And we discovered that teachers were actually having their own little supply of food.
Niemeyer expects food costs to continue to go up. She's grateful for the help. The food in the bags is nutritionally balanced. It's picked out by a Registered Dietitian at the local Caramont Hospital. That's unique for a backpack program like this, and it's important because it means they get a discount on the cost of the food. It adds up. This year, they're on track to feed 744 students at 33 schools at a cost of $205,000. Once the bags are packed, volunteers load up their cars and trucks and bring them to the schools where staffers put them into the students' backpacks. Principal Stacy Bradley.
It absolutely makes a difference. It makes a huge difference for our students.
Students like second grader KJ in a gifted program excited about reading. We spoke to his mom.
It's helped my family tremendously. I am a single parent, and I'm a working part-time position.
Marie White has two older children and says she had to put a bit of pride aside to sign up for a weekend backpack for KJ. But when she lost her second job, she was happy for the extra food.
He really likes it. He, you know, like kind of pulls out all of the little meals that he has, all the little snacks, and he loves the applesauce and the little fruit tart thing that comes with it.
Parents must sign a form that they agree the food is for the child, not for them. While there is some abuse, there are also many parents who've landed a job, gotten back on their feet, and have asked to let another family take their place. Almost every school has a waiting list.
These students, they need this food on the weekend so they can come to school. Students cannot learn if they're hungry, if they're tired, if they have issues at home, and this definitely helps our students because with their bellies full, they can learn and be receptive.
Some crackers, instant noodles, a little cereal. It may not seem like a lot, but Carolyn Niemeyer says it's a powerful message to the children who receive it. Someone knows about you, and someone cares. For Carolina Impact, I'm Stacy Sims, reporting.
Ms. Niemeyer, this is a piece of paper, but it can't do you justice. Thank you so much. From the Board.
Thank you so much. Thank you. (Applause) I really want you to know that I'm just the person who threw the pebble in the water. There are hundreds of volunteers that care about the children in this community. They want them to be less hungry. What a perfect time for all the school representatives here because they know they're on the front lines, and we are so proud of this community. There is not one dime of federal or public money in this program, which speaks well of this community and the caring, kind people who live here. Mr. Price has gone over so many of the people who've helped us, and the video has done the same, and I won't repeat it. But this is a quote that I would like to leave everyone here with, for you to remember. It comes from a teacher. "We never know who is watching. We never know when what we have to give might meet another's need. No matter how simple the act may seem, we never, may never, get another opportunity to touch someone's life." This is what this program has tried to do for these children, to build better citizens so they aren't going to be hungry and will listen to all these teachers and educators here. So thank you for recognizing us. It means a lot.
It is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselflessly given of their time, talents, skills, and energies and service as an appointee to one of the Boards of the Commission. This type of service is the foundation for the citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of following individuals, and our certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Penny Stubbs, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Neil Styers, Economic Development Commission. Jonathan Schrock, Gaston County Board of Adjustments. Jim Biggerstaff, Gary Cannon, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Wade Leepart, Sarah Local Planning Committee. Richard Cromlich, Cindy Towery, Transportation Advisory Board. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Our next item is citizen recognition. It's limited to one hour. Signups prior to the starter session. Comments are limited to five minutes. If you would, when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. First up is Ms. Wilma R. Craig, and then Mr.
I'm Wilma Ratchford Craig. We live at 315 Union New Hope Road, Gastonia, North Carolina. Weren't we thrilled to see that just now? I was, and it makes me feel good. And I want to say to you that the same thing needs to happen with getting our libraries open so that students can go by in the afternoon, our parents can come at other times, and support the schools as much as possible. Let's be proud of our library system, which has been good through the years. Let's be even prouder of our school system. Thank you for considering it and doing something. This is the year to, to make it happen, however you need to do to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craig.[1413.83][1413.83](Applause) Mr.
Bill Craig, 315 Union New Hope Road, Gastonia. As a former employee of Gaston County, I think I can speak with some knowledge of what the employees of Gaston County and some of the programs of Gaston County are needing. And I, this is what I've come to say, maybe it's time that we consider, even if it takes a little raise in our taxes, for us to do something for these programs. As my wife spoke about the library, and there are other programs that have been hurt too, and then the county employees, they need to be remembered when we start budgeting for our county.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Our next item is Mr. Hanson, and we'll have a GCL MPO, Locally Coordinated Plan Request for Adoption. And I assume you will keep it short.
I will.
Gaston County is a member of the Gaston Cleveland Lincoln Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is responsible for performing transportation planning on behalf of the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the area. One of the requirements we have to do is every four years, update the locally coordinated plan, which is a coordinated transportation plan of all the existing demand response and fixed drought systems in the three counties. And so, the previous plan was adopted in 2009, and since that time, the three counties have merged together into one transportation planning organization. It used to be the Charleville part of the county was in the rural area. And also, Aridale County is part of that organization. So you'll see in the maps that are included in your handout, Aridale County is included because when this plan was initiated, the merging of the three counties occurred, and Aridale County actually became a part of the Charlotte Transportation Planning Organization. This plan is a needs assessment, is not a fiscally constrained set of recommendations. It is not an obligation on behalf of any of the transit systems or the counties to implement. It simply forms a needs assessment of identified transit needs in the area that the counties and the city can choose from for grant applications for expanding or modifying transit services when they go for grant applications. And so, this has been presented already to the four counties. It's gone through the Transportation Advisory Board for Gaston County where it received a recommendation, and the recommendations for Gaston Access and Gastonia Transit were fairly minor. It was for expanding the hours of service, increasing the frequency of service to Gaston College, and for Gaston Access, which affects the county, providing additional coverage at the end of the day when Gastonia Transit ends services, and sometimes people are left stranded at their destinations. And so, this plan recommendation is going to be on your agenda for later in this month for adoption. There's no fiscal impact upon the county, but at this time, I'll try and answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Board? Hearing Commissioner Keger.
Just curious, do you rotate the meetings, locations?
For the MPO. The MPO meetings are typically held at the Sheriff's Office just down the street, and the staff meetings are typically held in the Gaston County Administration Building downtown.
So they're all held here?
They're all held in Gastonia.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is consolidation. One year later, Mr. Chris Dobbins, DHHS Director. Mr. Dobbins.
Mr. Chairman, it was suggested on my way in tonight, if I kept this presentation short, that there would be compensation. So with that in mind, are there any questions?[1709.03][1709.03](Laughter) As the Board knows, one July 2013, we established the Department of Health and Human Services. That action essentially combined two very large departments, the Health Department and Department of Social Services, into one agency of 630 staff with a $630 million budget. No small animal, to say the least. With that action, the Board also established a consolidated Board of 19 professionals in the community. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize those individuals that are in the audience tonight who have supported us and really made this year possible. If I could get the Board members to stand up that are in attendance tonight, as well as our Chair, Dr. Ann Hochschild, and several of Board members. With their support, the Board's support, what I'm about to present to you is a very good year, in my opinion, of what consolidation has to offer the community and really the way ahead for Health and Human Services. The goals of consolidation were pretty simple, although vast in its accomplishments. Our primary goals were communication, cooperation, and collaboration. With that, how we achieved it was through improving our access. We really focused a lot on reducing cost, basically taxpayer dollars. Also, we looked at a lot of our man- Also, we looked at a lot of our non-mandated services and how we might be able to save those resources by contracting out anything that was not mandated by the statutes or the state or the federal government. And then last, but not least, we wanted to put a organization in front of the community that was transparent, that we could respond to customer concerns, customer complaints, and be able to answer their questions appropriately and promptly. So, the question is, how did we do? One of our very first recognitions was, our Health Department was recognized as the National Medium-Sized Health Department of the Year. As you might imagine, that's no small feat, and a very large number of very qualified departments were in the running for that. One of the other things that we were asked to look at was trimming resources, trimming programs that we were not actually required by the state to perform. One of those areas that we looked at was our child health program. And what we found was, we had the ability to partner with one of our local professional organizations, Gaston Family Health Services, which, as you know, is our federally qualified health center. Mr. Robert Spencer and his staff were very open to this transfer. It is no longer going to be under county control effective 1 July. The net savings there, as you see, is 13 positions with an annual savings of anywhere between $80,000 and $100,000 to the county moving forward. We also upgraded several of our facilities without using county tax dollars. We maximized what we call our Medicaid MAX funding to support those renovations, both at Highland and at Summit. And we're currently in the process of renovating and putting together a plan for phased improvements at the Hudson Boulevard office, which again, will be used with Medicaid tax dollars, or excuse me, Medicaid dollars. The other thing that sometimes goes a little under the radar is the Health Division is very engaged and very responsible for the health of our young children. One example is, we are responsible for delivering 56% of our county's new births. Sometimes that goes unrecognized. But I think in our partnership with Caramont, Doug Luckett and his incredible staff, I think we're seeing even more improvements in the future as we reduce the rate of infant mortality in our county. And this is just one example of great collaboration and partnerships. We completed our electronic health records implementation, which anyone in the information technology world knows, that is no small feat. What I will say is, we secured over $600,000 in incentive funds for $800,000 of the program. So, essentially, what would have cost the county $800,000 ended up costing the county a little over $100,000. So, once again, putting our processes and programs to use to reduce the drain on local resources. The other thing that we did is, we looked at the agency as a whole and how we might streamline and reduce redundancy. Too high level of leadership pushing down the resources to where the actual work is getting done, that's always something we listen to. And one of the results of that effort was our reorganized organization. We went from two directors and 13 administrators, basically, to one director and two divisions. We're very lean when it comes to upper management. We're pushing those resources of vacated positions down to the, really, for lack of a better word, where the rubber meets the road, where the resources are actually touching the community and actually doing the work. I don't need to pay a lot of money for someone that receives it at a high level to forward an email to someone who actually does the work. I need somebody there that can do the work. So, with our leadership team, we identified positions that really did need that type of support, and we streamlined the organization, as you see here with the organization, reorganization. We also are looking at common contract, combining common contracts. We found that the two departments had similar contracts with agencies, but they were separate, so there was no benefit. By combining those contracts, we were able to reduce the cost of the contract. We're looking to do that not only with our department, but also with the county as a whole, where those like services may be rendered. We're also exploring possible vehicle leasing, as well as staffing outsourcing, that may reduce the cost on county. I think we're very quickly becoming the beta test for a lot of these opportunities. Doesn't mean that we have to adopt it, but certainly, we're willing to try it to see if it saves resources as well as improves our service delivery. This next fiscal year, we've identified another program, non-mandated by the state, that we're transitioning to our community health partners, which is a relationship with our federally qualified health center. Once again, this may not be as much a dollar savings as it is a resource savings in that we will no longer have to manage these resources. This will be managed by community health partners, and as any leader knows, personnel takes up a lot of your time. So, this will be another 12 positions that will no longer fall under the quote-unquote oversight of the Gaston County Health Department. We're very proud that we're expanding our policies beyond the campus of our Hudson facility and that we're making all of our campuses that fall under Department of Health and Human Services tobacco-free. We think that's the right thing to do. We think it speaks to our mission and our charter, and we're very excited about that spreading throughout the county. And last, but by no means least, a bullet that I think the commission and the county and the community will all appreciate, we're projecting this year a savings, a total savings of between $2.5 and $3 million in county tax dollars through our cost-saving measures, as well as our lapse salary savings. Now, obviously, any transition of this size does not come without its challenges. What you see before you is some of the areas that we are really working diligently to overcome. As you know, NCFAST has really kind of taken on a life of its own, its implementation in the state. Obviously, we're one of 100 counties that are experiencing this problem, but we are certainly working with the state, providing suggestions on how we might improve that, and we're trying to provide resources at the local level to minimize that impact on our community. The great unknown on the Health Division side is the future of healthcare. What's it going to look like? You know, what are the mandates going to be, and how is public health, local health, going to play into that solution? Changing paradigms, one of the primary programs in public health is prevention. Unfortunately, that is not as prevalent in our social services or human services side, where it's a response. We're looking for programs that can enhance and essentially, hopefully, improve the chances for people not to need those human resource programs. We're looking, obviously, at integrating policies and procedures so that we're consistent throughout the department. Reaccreditation is going to be looking and staring upon us after the first of the year. Integration of mental health. There is not a single program in either Health or Human Services that does not touch, or is not touched, by the mental health component. That is the third prong, that we need to figure out a way to integrate into our service delivery so that we'll provide one-stop, whole-health delivery of services. Growing of caseloads. I've been very close contact with the county manager, the board. We've made it very prominent and very much aware that our struggles are in compensation and caseload growth. It's a compounding problem with compensation that our staff, obviously, are looking to take better care of themselves and their families with compensation. So, it's not difficult to go to a surrounding county that pays more for a lower caseload. So, you might imagine, as individuals leave, someone has to carry the work that is being left behind. So, we're working on that. County Manager's Office, our HR department, is very diligently working on that. We hope to have a solution in the not-too-distant future for how we can address those growing concerns. So, in summary, we believe, after the first year of consolidation, we have greatly improved our communication, both with staff and the community. We're certainly more lean. In our opinion, we're more efficient. We very much have reduced our span of control and our very clear chain of command. We've improved our access in that we've grown the ability for the local community to come into our facilities and receive multiple services, not just health, but also human services, regardless of the facility that they go to. We're very proud of the amount of tax dollars that we've saved, and probably, I would say, you, as much as anyone, might can relate to the last bullet, in that we have significantly reduced our community complaints. My guess is that your phone will tell you if that's an accurate statement or not. With that said, we believe the decision was well-just. We think we've had a very good year. That's not to say that we don't have a lot of work in front of us, but if you always do what you've always done, you always get what you always got. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dobbins, I just want to tell you and your staff, thank you.
Thank you.
The last point about the phone calls has been greatly reduced, and that's been, but the biggest part, I think, is the overall feel for this. We went into it with not knowing. We were looking at savings. We were looking at different types of consolidations of what it may bring. I'm looking forward to the next year and what it may be. Hopefully, we can cut this down next year to a little less time spent on it, but thank you, but thank you to your staff, and please go and let them know that from this board, we appreciate the efforts. We know the NCFAST has been one of the biggest issues, but like I said, hopefully, they can get that figured out, and we can help the other two problems that you had. You can work on the caseload, and I'll work on the compensation.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Keger.
Thank you. Well, it goes without saying, we all are grateful for the staff hanging in there. It hasn't been the sweetest ride the last couple of years. But I also want to make note again of the board. You know, we had a DSS board and then a Health Department board, and they did two distinctly different things, for the most part, and it wasn't easy. You know, I wouldn't, Mr. Price and I serve on that consolidated board, and we weren't really hands-on, meat-and-potato-type involved.
Yes, sir.
Except from this position.
Yes, sir.
But I know an awful lot of work went into it, and I just want to give a special shout-out to the folks that have agreed to serve on that board. Employees are paid. The folks that do all this work in the evenings and stuff, there's no paycheck with that. And I guess why there's so many people here. We want to thank all the folks that volunteered to serve on all the boards without them, like Carolyn Niemeyer and her group. There's so many things that go on in the community that wouldn't go on without the volunteers. So, thank you to the staff, and thank you to the board.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Keger. Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, before I go, I know it's not appropriate, and I certainly will miss someone's name if I try to list all the individual staff that made this possible, but the two people that really have been my lieutenants through this entire transition, Miss Karen Calhoun and Mr. Steve Eaton, both in the audience tonight, you wouldn't have these results if it wasn't for those two exceptional professionals, and I just want to be on record as saying that. Thank you very much.
I just have one comment as well. I remember when we first started talking about this idea, packed house. Nobody liked it. Nobody wanted it. A lot of people were nervous, didn't really know, you know, how it was going to work out. And I think it's an example of leaner, more efficient government, improved and better access, and I think we got the right leader. I appreciate you, what you do, your staff, your board, Dr. Hochschild. Thank you, as chairman, and it's well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is other Mathers. Commissioner Frayley.
I have none.
Commissioner Brown.
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price.
None at this time.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Keger.
No, sir.
And I have none. Okay. This concludes our work session for tonight. We will convene our June 10th special meeting shortly. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Spectacular-Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. This meeting is adjourned, and we're going to take a two-minute recess.
[applause]
[inaudible]
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 Good evening, and welcome to the June 10th public hearing on the proposed 2014-2015 Gaston County Budget. At this time, I'll call this meeting to order. Let me outline the rules of procedure for the public hearing on the budget. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the Chair and requested to step to the microphone. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the Chair for response, and the Chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. I also want to outline a couple of other rules. If we could, if we could not clap, I understand you may want to, and there may be something you like, but what it'll do to help move the meeting, if we're spending five to 10 seconds between each clap with three sheets of folks, we could be here a while. So, if you could, please limit that. Also, I do see that some of you have signs. You're more than welcome to show the sign. All I would ask, if you're sitting at your chair, you don't raise the sign up so the folks behind you can't see the people speaking. With that said, do I have a motion to go into public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Keger. In discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We are now in public hearing. Before I take citizens' comment, I'm going to ask the county manager for any comments prior to taking citizens' comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and members of the public. It's great to see such a wonderful turnout. You know, when I moved to Gastonia, to Gaston County recently, I thought things would move a little more slowly in the South, but that proved not to be the case. In fact, I've been moving at warp speed pretty much for five and a half months now, mostly associated with the preparation of this budget. Actually, there's been a couple of times when I've been very tempted to say, "Beam me up, Scotty." Seriously, there's a couple of things I'd like to touch on very briefly before we move forward with this special session. The first is that we are indeed in a transitional year for a number of reasons, and we have a pretty flat budget. But to get us through this transitional year in which we'll be introducing the process of priority-based budgeting, and we'll be undergoing a revow for our property taxes, we're still in a state of economic recovery, and a variety of other factors that probably will influence where our budget will be next year, I think we have a budget that we can very much live with. It's one that should not require significant amendments as we go through the fiscal year, and, you know, it is one that also does make some use of fund balance, which I know has been an issue. But I will suggest that our current fund balance is still at 19%. As you know, the Gaston County policies call for maintaining a fund balance between 10% and 20%. So, we're very much at the upper end of that currently. We plan to use a little bit of fund balance this year to balance our budget, but I do not think that it will jeopardize our financial position. A couple of other points. One has to do with the schools. And as you know, the budget for this year, as presented, maintains the same level of funding for Gaston County schools as it did last year. However, it also calls for $1 million to be moved from the operating side of the ledger to the capital side of the ledger. Our overall funding for our schools is currently around $45 million. And we also have set aside 1.5% to match the, an increase in the teacher subsidy. So, that money is budgeted for, it can come out actually of a couple of different pools, assuming a one-to-one match of those funds. Gaston College, we have included a $150,000 increase in their operating budget. And lastly, but certainly not by any means the least important, is we have included a 3% salary increase for all Gaston County staff. That's all I have, but I would be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Earl. No questions at this time. At this time, what I'm going to do is ask the first-in citizens who signed up to come line up to speak at the podium. I'm going to call you in order. As you're called, approach the podium, state your name and address. Once you're finished, you can either remain standing, or you can go back to your seat. I just ask that you would do so quietly. At this time, we would ask Mr. James Smith, Pat Skinner, in this order. At this time, we would ask Mr. James Smith, Pat Skinner, in this order, Mary...
Priggin.
Priggin. I met Mary earlier. Rebecca Duncan, Kenny, Kenneth Lutz, Jeff Ramsey, Phyllis Whitworth, Chris, this looks like Hayder.
Hayfer.
Hayfer, okay. Tiffany Brisbane, and Sarah Chris. And we'll begin with Mr. James Smith. You have three minutes.
Chairman Philbeck, commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen, my name is James Smith. I live at 2354 Erica Lane in Gastonia, and I serve as Chair of the Board of Trustees for Gaston College. I'm here to speak on behalf of the college tonight. Also in attendance tonight are other trustees, Ms. May Gray Robinson, Sheriff Alan Kloniger, Mr. Steve Campbell, and Commissioner Tom Keger. Also, there are several members of the Gaston College faculty and staff present. I'd like to ask them to stand for a moment, be recognized. Thank you. The relationship between Gaston College and the county is an important one. We are grateful to the county for its support and funding, which are essential for maintenance, capital, safety, and security needs. Gaston College would certainly not be able to meet academic needs without adequate facilities to house programs. For almost 50 years, Gaston College has paved the way to provide quality education for a variety of student needs in our communities, providing quality leadership and academic success. An important aspect of the college's planning is continued attention to its future needs and setting goals and priorities in academic, administrative, and capital aspects of the college. Your economic support of operational and capital needs is vital in continuing to provide a safe, accessible, quality learning environment to our students. Gaston College plays an important role in attracting new businesses to Gaston County, such as Owens Corning, CTL Packaging, Dixon Quick Coupling. These businesses provide important jobs for our citizens, add to the tax base of the county, and rely on the college to provide needed specialized training to their workers. The college is requesting an operating budget of $4.7 billion. That includes a $150,000 increase over the current budget to provide funds for a modest pay increase for our maintenance and security personnel and utility price increases. The college is also requesting funding of $697,000 to provide needed repairs to roofs, boilers, chillers, and installation of several ADA-compliant elevators in our oldest buildings. The reduced funding level of $453,000 that we've experienced over the past four years has created a backlog of deferred maintenance that must be addressed to prevent building deterioration. I would request the college's budget be approved as submitted for both operating and capital needs. The Board of Trustees of Gaston College appreciates your help and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Skinner.
Good evening, Chairman Philbeck, commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak regarding the proposed county budget. My name is Pat Skinner, and I'm the president of Gaston College, and I live at 1843 Lookout Lane in Gastonia. And I am here tonight on behalf of Gaston College to appeal to you to fully fund both our operating budget and our capital needs, and we do appreciate your funding of the operating budget, as we heard earlier. For the past several years, however, our budget requests for both operating and capital have not been fully funded, and that has created a backlog of maintenance projects. As Chairman Smith has already mentioned, our operating needs, I'd like to focus on capital. We have a priority list right now of about $925,000 in immediate capital needs, which includes an elevator replacement for the Myers Center, a new roof for a portion of the fire building, and a roof coating for a portion of the Comer Building. If our capital budget continues to be funded at the reduced level of $450,000 versus the historical level of $697,000, we will only be able to address one of these priority needs in the coming year. Many of our buildings, as you know, were constructed in the 1960s and 70s and do require roofs and chillers and upgrades, and several of our older buildings require ADA-compliant elevators to provide full access to all of our students. And the inability to complete maintenance on our facilities now may result in emergency replacements and costlier repairs in the future. The college is deeply grateful for the $24.9 million bond referendum that the voters approved in 2006. And these funds have allowed us to expand and update our facilities to support our mission to our over 22,000 students that we serve annually. As a result of those funds, we have added over 173,000 square feet of new teaching space to the college, which is a 35% increase in overall square footage. More specifically, we have built the David Beck Belt Cannon Health Sciences Building, the Robinson Building, and renovated the classroom building on the Kimbrel campus. We've renovated and expanded the Lena Sue Beam Building as well with the early college high school. I see that I am out of time, and I just want to say thank you for all of your support, and we are grateful to you for the support we've received. But I do ask that you fully fund our capital needs as well as our operating. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Ms. Priggin. Pritchard?
Priggin.
Priggin.
Close enough.[959.11][959.11](laughing) Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mary Priggin. I live at 129 Fights Creek Road in Mount Holly. I have a six-year-old boy, Michael. He just finished first grade today at Idarankin Elementary. And thank you, ladies, for your great leadership at Idarankin Elementary. I'm so proud to be part of that community, and we are so blessed to have you, to let us know about this meeting here tonight. Otherwise, I wouldn't have known. So, thank you for that, and thank you for having me speak this evening. While I was thinking about what I wanted to say, I went out to the Gaston County Board of Commissioners website, and I know you all know your mission, but it ties into my speech, so I'd like to share it with you. Gaston County seeks to be among the finest counties in North Carolina. It will provide effective, efficient, and affordable services, leading to a safe, secure, and healthy community, an environment for economic growth, and promote a favorable quality of life. And the first sentence struck me hard, to be among the finest counties in North Carolina. Next, I thought I better do a little research about this budget business. And I've learned that teachers in our county are not even making the state average. I know there's a plan to bring them up to average, but I just ask myself, how in the world can we be the finest county in North Carolina, and our teachers are not even making average salaries? How can we be the finest county in North Carolina when our schools don't have up-to-date technology? How can we be the finest county in North Carolina if our schools are in need of basic repairs? So, I think you see my point. Our schools are struggling to be average. Average doesn't sit well for my Michael and my Emily and all the children in this community who are our future of Gaston County. We need the funding so our schools can be better than average. Thank God our teachers have the passion, because they're certainly not doing it for the paycheck. Thank God our teachers have that passion. And to keep that passion going, we need to give them the resources they need. We need to give them the funding so they can have the finest technology. We need to give them the funding so they can have the finest resources and facilities, especially those teachers' assistants. And it ties back to our mission, a safe and secure, healthy community. Those teachers' assistants, that's their role. They are taking care of sick children and taking care of making copies and behavioral issues to keep our schools safe. So, our funding is the only way we can meet that mission statement, and the funding is only, the only way that we can become the finest county in North Carolina. Thanks for your time.
Ms. Duncan.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman Philbeck, and good evening Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Duncan. I live at 1009 Strawberry Lane in Gastonia. I am proud to be the principal of Sadler Elementary School, and I have the honor this year of serving as the Gaston County Principal of the Year. It is my pleasure to speak to you this evening on behalf of our schools and to encourage you to fully fund the local budget request presented by our Board of Education. Providing a sound public education with adequate funding and resources is the key to having a viable community. Our schools must have the funds necessary to operate where our students have the best teachers, the best schools, the best technology, and the best resources to learn, grow, and thrive. I speak this evening on behalf of my colleagues out of great concern for our schools and the amount of funding they receive. In Gaston County, our schools are severely underfunded. For the past five or six years, we have faced drastic budget cuts, which over time have taken a toll on our schools. If we want great schools, we have to provide enough funding so that our students and teachers have the resources they need to achieve greatness. Every student in Gaston County deserves to have the very best teachers. We have excellent teachers at Sadler Elementary School, as do the other schools in Gaston County. However, I am deeply troubled when I hear my teachers talking about how much money they make now in Gaston County and how much more they can make in a surrounding county or across the border in South Carolina. Back in March, I sent out a survey to find out how many people were planning to come back to Sadler. Out of 23 classroom teachers, seven of my teachers said they were looking towards South Carolina, not because they didn't like Sadler, not because they didn't like Gaston County, but because they need more money to support their families. Now, we're in June, and I'm looking at not seven, but eight, nine, and 10 of my 23 teachers who are looking to make that kind of move. And I cannot offer them the same kind of financial compensation that South Carolina offers. It is time for Gaston County to do something to help us and our teachers to provide the latest technology resources. Our children deserve the best teachers and 21st century technology, and we are, and we need to keep our highly qualified, highly-trained, dedicated teachers, and the only way we can do this is with those competitive salaries. We have trained them. We don't want to lose them. The Board of Education's budget request includes a five-year plan to increase the local supplement paid to teachers. This plan would move the teachers up to the state average. I encourage the commissioners to implement this plan to ensure fair and competitive compensation for our teachers. I'm proud to say that I am a product of Gaston County schools, and I don't want to be anywhere else. I believe that we're the best in the state, and it is my pleasure to serve as the principal at Sadler Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. This time, Chairman of School Board, Mr. Kenny Lutz.
Good evening, Chairman Philbeck, and members of the county commission. I'm Kenneth Lutz. I reside at 808 Carson Road. I'm here to speak tonight about the funding of our, the full funding of our budget. Significant full school funding is necessary to ensure our young people are prepared for college and their future careers. Our community expects Gaston County to have a quality education, provide a quality education for our students, safe school buildings, and make sure that there are adequate, up-to-date technology and the latest instructional services. Unfortunately, the funding situation facing our school causes great concern about how we can continue to do more for less. According to this local and state budget proposal, Gaston County schools could see a significant decrease in funding this year. The funding cuts would have a dire effect on our classroom. Our schools are already operating on an extremely tight budget. Simply put, we continue to be underfunded, and this reality has created a critical crisis. The school district requested $53.2 million in local funds from the county commissioners. Without adequate funding from the county, it will be difficult for us to offer the necessary salary increases for the teachers and to implement important programs for our students. Obviously, the magnitude of our funding problem is overwhelming, and it is extremely challenging to operate our schools on a daily basis, keep good teachers, and maintain a safe school buildings for our children to attend. We believe our citizens want sound public schools in Gaston County, and we believe the community wants our children to receive a quality education, but it comes with a price. So, tonight, on behalf of the teachers, the students, the parents, and the employees, I ask the commissioners to approve our school budget request as submitted to the county because we firmly believe that our children are worth it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Lutz.[1479.63][1479.63](applause) Next up is Vice Chair of School Board, Mr. Jeff Ramsey. Mr. Ramsey?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Philbeck, and members of the county commission. Before I start, I'd like to recognize Mr. Dobins for his partnership with Dr. Bachnight this past year.
If you could, please state your address.
I'm getting to it, Mr. Philbeck. My name is Jeff Ramsey. I'm the vice chairman. I live at 1006 Milton Court, Cramerton, North Carolina. As your vice chairman of Gaston County Board of Education, it is a pleasure to speak before you this evening on behalf of Gaston County schools. While many people are speaking tonight about the budget, I would like to talk first about a vision. While many, having a vision makes, that vision a reality takes courage and also takes a willingness and make a bold and sometimes difficult decisions. Having a vision and making it a reality requires our leaders to invest in our people, our community, and the future of Gaston County. And turning a vision into reality happens only when we provide necessary resources, funding, building partnerships, and work together towards a common goal in Gaston County. One vision we have for our schools is making sure our children and teachers have school buildings that are conducive to teaching and learning. And you, as county commissioners, took that first step this past month by extending our 2007 school bonds to 2017. This will allow us to use the bond funds to start renovating schools that are desperately needing of repairs through Gaston County. Thank you for helping us make that vision a reality. Another vision we have is to invest in our teachers, our greatest resource. Without our teachers and facilitators, we would be nothing. So, tonight, I would like you to reality of increasing the number of, matching the supplements that we offer, a five-year plan for you. So, I encourage you greatly, as you heard, the principal at Sadler, we're losing teachers. We're losing the best and brightest teachers. And that concerns me, because without the teacher, we're nothing as a student. Another vision, provide more literacy teachers in elementary schools and help children who are falling behind in their reading skills. If you provide funding for literacy teachers, the reality will be an increase in number of children who can read at above-grade level by the end of third grade. We believe that establishing solid literacy skills at age will also increase the student attendance and our graduation rate. And of course, I know what y'all are thinking right now. That's not y'all's job, but it is. State law says you're supposed to take care of buildings and facilities, but that was written in 1950s. Today, it's competitive world that we live in, and each county in supplements, investing in the future of teachers and our students. With your investment in this, you will be able to have a better trained and educated citizens. Tonight, I would encourage our county commission to invest in education. In your budget, you have education listed as number three. I urge you to be bold and take steps tonight to make education number one, the number-one priority for Gaston County. If you do this, new businesses and industries will take a look at Gaston County, will attract new residents, which will help our county grow and prosper. The commitment you make tonight to education could transform our community. We encourage you to share our vision for education in Gaston County. Working together, we can make our vision a reality and make our schools the best in North Carolina. In closing, if we've been challenged to be a top-10 school system, it's going to take a top-10% funding. Right now, we're ranked 72 out of 100 counties and fund local funding. So, I challenge you tonight, if you move our budget up to number one, we could be at top-10%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey.[1737.21][1737.21](applause) Phyllis Whitworth?
My name is Phyllis Whitworth. I reside at 4827 Hidden Metal Court, Gastonia, North Carolina, 28056. Good evening, Chairman Philbeck, and members of the Gaston County Commission. On behalf of the 32,000 children, 3,700 employees in Gaston County schools, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak concerning the proposed budget for our school system. When I knew I had this opportunity, I thought, what is it that I can say that will make a difference? What is it that I can say that will have an impact on the budget? As we all know, Gaston County schools is at a critical crossroad when it comes to funding. Over the past five years, the district has been forced to cut $30 million in state funds from its budget. from its budget and eliminate 600 positions. The economic recession had a devastating effect on all of us, and our schools have suffered greatly, there is no question about that. The unfortunate reality of our economic woes has created a funding crisis for our schools, and we desperately need your help. We've taken every measure possible to conserve funds where it's feasible without affecting our schools, but we cannot continue to protect the classroom from budget cuts. Please hear my plea this evening, whatever you do, please do not decrease local funding for Gaston County Schools. So I said to myself, this is not a matter of Gaston County Commissioners versus Gaston County Schools, nor Gaston County Commissioners and Gaston County Schools versing Gaston County citizens. What this is, is what message do we want to send to our children of Gaston County Schools? We tell them, all children can learn, children are first, Gaston County, the best choice. And that, we tell them, if they go out and get a good education, all things are possible. So, we continuously find ourselves here each time during this time of the year. So I say, just do it, do the right thing. I want to leave with you a short story about Evelyn Love Freeman, who is my deceased mother. She moved to Gaston County some 50-plus years ago from McConnell, South Carolina, with an eighth-grade education. She worked for Gaston County Schools as a cafeteria worker. She valued education. When I completed ninth grade, she received her GED from the Howland Evening Adult Classes. Her words were, "When you get it, they can't take it away from you." And that's what our charge is to the boys and girls of Gaston County. We need to provide for them the best possible education. When they get it, we can't take it away from them. Thank you.
Hafer.
Hafer.
My name is Chris Hafer, and I am the Honoring President of Kia of Gastonia. I live at 2405 Shuta Avenue, Gastonia. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of the Gaston County Schools and the importance of public education. Last year, I had the unique opportunity to partner with the school system and establish the Kia Outstanding Educator Award Program that recognizes the hard-working and dedicated professionals in our schools. The program gave the local Kia dealership an opportunity to recognize outstanding school employees and presented a new car to one of the lucky employees. I've always been a champion of education, and I thank all school personnel for everything they do to provide a quality education for students. The teachers and support personnel do an incredible job with very limited resources, and I commend them for doing more, more with less each year. However, I'm very concerned about losing our teachers to other school systems because they can receive a higher salary somewhere else for the same amount of work. I respectfully ask the County Commission to approve the five-year plan as proposed by the Board of Education that will approve the local salary supplement for teachers and help move our county to the state average in teacher pay. We can't, we cannot lose our good teachers to the districts because of our inability to pay teachers what we deserve, what they deserve. We simply cannot let this happen. If it does, it will have an adverse effect on the classroom and our children. As a business owner in this community, it is extremely important to fully fund education. If our educational system in Gaston County is strong, our community will be strong and so will our future. I'm requesting that the commissioners fund the Board of Education's budget request as presented to the county so we can move our schools forward and provide the best educational opportunities possible for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brisbane. Hafer?
No.
The next person.
Tiffany Brisbane, I live at 2411 Glen Ridge Drive, Gastonia. Good evening Chairman Philbeck and members of the Gaston County Commission. My name is Tiffany Brisbane, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Brookside Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my school concerning the Gaston County Schools budget. Let me first say that I know we have experienced very tough economic times, and I know it's extremely difficult for you to prepare a county budget given our current economic situation. Gaston County School teachers and their students have felt the difficulties of these tough economic times, and we are at a point where we need your help to provide additional funding for our schools. Over the past few years, the lack of adequate funding has affected my school, my classroom, and the classrooms of my two children. Lack of money for supplies has been felt throughout the building. Teachers are willing to dip into their own pockets to supply basic materials, but with a nearly frozen salary for several years, we have reached our breaking points. I have colleagues, veteran teachers, as well as those new to the profession, who are crossing either state or county lines for more money and smaller class sizes. These are not greedy teachers, simply ones who cannot continue to support their families, pay off student loans, or pay off their monthly bills without an increase in their monthly paycheck. All of this being said, our need for a salary increase should not come from sacrificing the jobs of our teacher assistants. As a first-grade teacher, I've already had to feel the impact of cut hours with a TA. Our first-grade classrooms of 25 students had to share a halftime assistant. This meant little to none, one-on-one time, along with very little acceleration and remediation time due to the increases of in-class testing, progress monitoring, and interventions. I want my struggling students to grow just as much as my high students, but the weakest area within my school is growing our highest-level students. Our goal for our students as parents, teachers, and society should not be to just meet our goals, but to exceed them. Our teacher assistants are an integral part of this process, we need them now more than ever. As a parent, it's difficult for me to see my kindergartner sit in a room of 26 students and wonder, "Am I doing the right thing? Will he be successful? Are his needs being met? Will he excel or simply be pushed to the side because he, like his older brother, does not require extra time from the teacher due to discipline concerns?" I believe that his education is just as important, but teachers with ridiculously large class sizes cannot continue to meet the needs of every student. Small class sizes and teacher assistants in our classrooms would make these goals attainable so that we can meet the needs of all and not of a few. As a teacher, I strongly believe in an education system that prepares children for the future. We must invest in education, by doing so, we are investing in our future. Thank you for considering the Gaston County Schools budget, and we respectfully ask that you to vote in favor of fully funding the school budget.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Crisp, if you'll hold one second, I'm going to go ahead and call the next 10 if you'll come up in order. Alexia Feller, Susan Lewis, Dr. Ann Hochschild, Dr. Gore, Dr. Benjamin Hitten, Dr. Pierre Crawford, Ms. Young, Ms. McDuffie, Mr. Frank McClure, and Robert Kellogg.
Mr. Chairman, before, Ms. Crisp, just sorry, in the interest of full disclosure, Ms. Crisp is my little girl's kindergarten teacher. Last day was today. I know there's a lot of educators here in the room, and I know you guys wear a lot of hats. I found out two days ago, sometimes that hat is dental assistant. Ms. Crisp had the fortunate luxury of extracting one of my daughter's teeth the other day, so, again, I know you wear a lot of hats, but that was actually one that I didn't expect to hear that story when I got home, but I appreciate that, I hope there was no vacane involved because I know how she can be very whiny.
She was perfect.
Like her mom is, so, oh, that's going to be bad. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Crisp, you can go ahead.
I'm Sarah Crisp, 1121 East Main Street, Dallas, North Carolina. Good evening Chairman Philbeck and members of the Gaston County Commission. My name is Sarah Crisp, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Brookside Elementary. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you on behalf of my school concerning the budget as we've reached a point where we must do something to provide additional funding for our schools. Inadequate funding has affected my school and my classroom tremendously over the past few years. This year, I, along with other teachers in my building, was faced with the most challenging year yet. I had 26 students in my classroom this year, and four of those students were identified as having special needs. That was the largest class size I have had in all of my 12 years of teaching, but nothing could be done to help the size of my classroom. When our principal asked the county for help, he was told that there was nothing they could do. The funds were gone after the 10th day of school, and my class size reached 26, along with the other kindergarten classrooms, around the 20th day of school. Due to these numbers, my students were unable to get the one-on-one attention that they deserved. Those six extra students were an extra reading group in my classroom. Every student is entitled to one-on-one attention and small group instruction, but large numbers make it extremely difficult to meet all the needs of my diverse group of learners. My full-time assistant played a significant role in implementing instruction in my classroom this year, as she does every year. She would work on phonics concepts that were differentiated based on her groups of students while I worked with students on reading strategies. She was the disciplinarian in my classroom while I was instructing. Rather than stop my lesson due to a behavior situation, my assistant would come over, take the child away from the group, rather than allow the child to interrupt my instruction for the other students or all the learning of the others. As you know, it can be quite a challenge keeping 26 five-year-olds on task and engaged. Overall, my students met their academic goals for the year. They made great progress due to my teaching experience, even though their one-on-one time was greatly limited. I had to revamp my whole classroom management, teaching style to accommodate the number of children that I had. Every year, we're asked to do more and more, and teachers worked diligently and miraculously to meet those challenges. And this is made possible through the use of teacher assistants who add immeasurable value to the classroom. Without my assistant, great progress could not happen. This afternoon, when I met my students, when my students went out the door and waved to me for the last time, I thought to myself, "Where could they be if only I'd had more opportunities to work with them one-on-one? How far could I have taken them? Is it okay to settle with meeting the goal and not excelling? I want my kids to soar and excel far beyond the expectations. These students are our future, and without smaller class sizes and teacher assistants, this will not be possible. Keep in mind that we are Gaston County Schools, but our students are Gaston County's future. Thank you for considering Gaston County Schools budget requests, and I ask that you vote in favor of fully funding the school budget."
Thank you, Ms. Feller.
Good evening Chairman Philbeck and members of Gaston County Commission. My name is Alexa Feller, and I'm a third-grade teacher at Cherryville Elementary. I live at Lowell Bethesda, Gastonia. Webster's Dictionary defines a teacher as "one who teaches." Many more elements have been added to this definition over the years. In 2014, not only, not only do we teach, but quite often we have to supplement our basic needs for the students and school supplies, which unfortunately has to come out of our own personal pockets. All teachers want their students to succeed in their highest potential, which is difficult without these items. Gaston County Schools is the ninth-largest school district in the state with 32,000 students, who also deserve updated materials like textbooks and computers. Excuse me. North Carolina is the 46th per pupil spending and 46th in teacher salaries, which means that we continue to do even more with less. Along with this, the class sizes continue to rise, teacher assistants are continuously cut. Due to this deficient, we are losing valuable teachers to nearby counties and states so they can have more secure futures. This is very disappointing to see highly-qualified teachers leaving Gaston County. I have seen highly-qualified teachers leave Gaston County. Our salaries need to be more competitive with the surrounding school systems so we can keep a highly-qualified teachers and entice teachers to be part of Gaston County school system. It is extremely important for our county to fully fund the Board of Education's budget proposal. Benjamin Franklin stated, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Please invest in Gaston County teachers who continue to help flourish the knowledge of our students, which will help our community move forward. Thank you for considering Gaston County School budget, and we respectfully ask you to vote in favor of fully funding the school budget.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Lewis.
Good evening Chairman Philbeck and members of the County Commission. My name is Suzy Lewis, I live at 349 Whitesides Road in Bessemer City, and I am president of Beam Construction Company in Cherryville. I'm a mother of three boys. One has graduated, one is graduating Saturday, and one has just finished the ninth grade at Cherryville High School. My oldest is a student at NC State studying to be an elementary school teacher. So, all of the budget talks have become quite the topic of conversation in our home, and it's beginning to be, take a much more personal tack than it has in the past. As a mother, and also as a businessperson, I am very concerned about Gaston County and Gaston County Schools. I was part of a task force several years ago to get the school bonds passed, which did pass, and part of our education process in getting that bond referendum passed was that there would be a tax increase in order to pay for the needed repairs and, not expansions, but repairs primarily, to our school facilities. Not all of that work has been completed. The citizens of this county voted to pass that bond, knowing that there would be a tax increase. I know enough about budgets to know that you can only do so much with a cut budget for so long. And there's only two things you can do. You can, with a governmental entity, you can raise taxes and you, or you can cut spending. I think it's been evident tonight that the results of a good portion of what's happened in our county and surrounding areas is, you know, budgets have been cut to the bone. We've got, and I didn't realize exactly what was going on, but I pack backpacks once a month for our church to take to Cherryville Elementary School. And to think that there are children that are going hungry or have the potential to go hungry kills me. And to know that my children have had classes where they can't bring a book home because there aren't enough books for the whole class to have, for more than one class to have a set, so they share a book. This is fundamentals. You cannot educate our children without the fundamentals covered. I see I'm out of time, but the long and short of it is, the only way to do this is raise taxes. I don't like paying taxes, I complain about it like everybody else, but that's the only way we're going to make this happen. The school system's got to be funded, or we're not going to continue to be able to attract businesses, educate our citizens so that they can make more than a minimum wage. And we've, we have a fiscal responsibility to do that as citizens of Gaston County. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Philbeck, friends on the Commission and Gaston County.
Before you begin, just to remind our speakers, we do have a three-minute limit. I am not trying to be rude, I want to make sure everybody gets to speak, but we need to try to keep it under three minutes so we can move the meeting along. Sorry about that. Thank you, Dr. Hochschild.
No problem. And thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Ann Hochschild, I live at 600 Spanish Oak Lane in Gastonia. Coming to you wearing many hats tonight, not to forget that I am a wife and mother, in fact, two boys that played on Forest Hu Golf Team at one point. And I wish I had answers, it's a tough budget that you're facing, but I would like to share a couple of thoughts. One regarding acute budgetary needs, another long-term planning. As a doctor, I get to see a lot of school teachers. In fact, we've kept certain plans in place to make sure that our teachers were covered. And I asked, asked a lot of questions over the last few months, and the one thing I hear over and over is the value of the teacher's assistance. I hear repeatedly that like healthcare, our teachers have to do more with less, children come to school less prepared to learn, and the non-instructural demands are ever increasing. I believe teacher's assistants are key in delivering quality education, and was glad to hear that point made so eloquently tonight. As a member of the Gaston Education Foundation, this is my second year through the mini-grant reading. I was stunned to see grants for things like setting up a classroom and other basic needs that I was surprised that we didn't provide in Gaston County. As Chair of the Health and Human Services Board, we have the healthiest kids, the unhealthiest kids in school ever. Nationally, we are facing a longevity our children are expected to live less than we are. What are we doing for health? I'm concerned that we have two, two schools per school nurse, sometimes- I'm concerned that we have two, two schools per school nurse, sometimes three. We've done a great job lowering the teen pregnancy rate, but those funds are running out next year. What are we going to do about that? The school's disrepair, we continue to hear that. And it came home to roost one day when I was treating a teenager with very dry eyes. One of the keys is hydration. And she says, "I don't like to drink anything until I get home because I have to use the bathrooms." And so, I started inquiring, and apparently, we would not want to use our ba, the bathrooms in the school system, and I think our kids should go to school someplace comparable to where we're meeting tonight. You can't spend money you don't have, and you can't cut your way to success. That's one of the things I learned early on as a businesswoman. So, I don't know how you solve this problem, but I am asking if perhaps there couldn't be a commitment that when this budget is completed and passed, it comes with a world-class plan. A plan that isn't about cutting, but that's about growing. I love this county, and I am proud to live and work here, and I will join you in harnessing innovation, passion, courage to change our perspective, change our approach, so that our budgets aren't about robbing Peter to pay Paul or using fund balances for rainy days. We just need to make hay when the sun shines. Education needs our full commitment, but let's have a plan that says, instead of where is the money coming from, what can we do with all the abundant resources that we have? Thank you, gentlemen.
Dr. Gore?
Chairman Philbeck, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Shawna Gore. My husband and I, we both are physicians here in Gaston County, 5221 Woodland Bay Drive, Belmont. I come here today because I have three sons that are in Gaston County Schools. We've lived here for 15 years, and our children have been in Gaston County Schools for eight years. I've been on the Parent Advisory Board, and I would say most of the teachers at both schools, at the middle school and elementary school, know me. And that's because I believe that you cannot drop a child off and say, "Have a good day." You have to be involved. I have been very, very fortunate that all of my children have had excellent experiences with Gaston County Schools. You know, I could have them in private school. Most of my patients are surprised. "Dr. Gore, where do your kids go?" And I tell them, "New Hope Elementary, Cramerton Middle School." I believe in these schools. These schools have done an excellent job with my children. Now, I could sit here and tell you about what everyone has already said as far as the teachers that are qualified, some national board certified, leaving to go to South Carolina, of which I've seen, leaving to go to Mecklenburg and Davidson County. And it's really been heartbreaking, because these have been some awesome teachers. Also, I could tell you about how old some of our schools are. You know, they're older than me. So, you know, and with that being said, they are in desperate need of repairs. And of course, we need you all with, and, you know, to look at our budget and make sure that these things happen. You know, getting back to you all's mission statement about the environment, providing an environment for growth. We all know that if the air conditioning isn't working, you can't do well. We saw that with LeBron James the other day. Okay? We know that if it's too cold, you know, you're sitting there shivering, you can't think. Mrs. Carolyn Niermeyer, you know, she, she provides food on the weekend, but in the public schools, we have to provide that food during the week. So, if there, if the money is not there, it has to come from someplace, and we want to make sure these, these children can, you know, aren't hungry and they eat. Also, how do we get some of these kids to school? Well, mine are fortunate. I drop them off, and I have a babysitter to pick them up. But we, there, there's some kids who they may not have a car, that someone can pick them up, so we have to provide transportation. It's a lot that public school has to provide. We don't have the luxury of saying, "Well," you know, like some, maybe some of the charter schools or the public, or the private schools, they say, "Well, you know, we're not able to service your needs, and you can't come here." We don't have that. But what we do have right now, we have some wonderful teachers, and we need to do our best to keep those teachers here. I see my time is out. You know which road I'm headed down, the same ones that the rest of these people are. So, I just ask you, please, please support Gaston County Public Schools and the proposal by the School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gore. Just for reference, I'm really hoping the Spurs win. Now, you don't look like Dr. Hinton.
I'm not Dr. Hinton.
Are you here for him?
No, I'm here for myself and my community.
Okay. Hold one sec. What's your name?
My name is Frank McClure. I live at.
Okay. Hold one second. Dr. Hinton, I assume is not here.
He's out of town.
Dr. Crawford is not here. Kathy Young, I think she was next, and then Linda, and then you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. But I am proud to be a member of Dr. Hinton's church, all right? But my name is Frank McClure, and I live at 317 Norwood Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina, and I live in the Merrill School District. And the schools that are in my district is Sattler Elementary School, Bessemer City High School. And I'm proud to be a parent that have sent three children through the Gaston County School System that become educators and also social workers here in Gaston County. It's been my pleasure for them to go through at that time. We didn't have too much problem with the budget at that time, but there's always some complications that will come up. But I was kind of stunned when I read and saw some of the budget proposals that we have for 2014 and 2015. And I'd just like to talk just for a moment about the decrease of the funding of the Gaston County Schools. And as I understand it, the Commissioner's budget was cut $4 million, the operation budget. However, the County Commissioner, as I understand, proposed a budget of $44.9 million. And the school district requested $53.2 million, which is a difference of $8.3 million, less than requested by the Board of Education. And I do understand that this will affect our schools, our teachers, and all the supporting staff, and especially our children. And I'm concerned about children, because I've always said that the children, even from the womb, even from the preschool and elementary school and all the through junior high school and high school, is the molding stage. And what we mold into these children, this is what they're going to be. And I've always taken the, taken the document stating that you can train a child now, and you can, and can do a good job with it, but it's hard to repair an adult. So, what we, and what I'm saying is, hopefully, and I ask you all that if you will, to try to keep our budget in good shape as we, as we can do it. And I would like to say this, even if the, the schoolteachers, if they don't have in, have enough teachers and the students are in the all classrooms, then they'll just push them right through, they'll go out and be a minister of society. And so, I would say this, I would rather to educate them than, instead of them being incarcerated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McClure. Ms. Young?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Young. I live at 530 Stewart Ridge in Cramerton, and I'm asked to be here tonight because of my job. I want to start by acknowledging your job, those men sitting in those seats. I do not miss politics. I do not miss serving in elected office. You have a really, really hard job. There's no decisions you can make about the budget that aren't going to make you the target of someone's criticism, anger, frustration. So, thank you for sitting there for us, and I know that you will make the best decisions you can. The only thing harder than sitting in those chairs is sitting in those chairs. And as I look around at the schoolteachers, I spent a few years as a schoolteacher in Gaston County Schools, taught with some of you. I know you feel forgotten and unappreciated, and that you are not valued. It is a, it is a shame and an embarrassment what North Carolina pays our teachers, and if we paid you what you were worth, you would all be millionaires. And from the bottom of my heart, as a parent of a child who will be graduating his entire career out of Gaston County Schools, thank you for what you do every day. Now, I have an easy job. I'm a real estate broker. I sell houses. I sell a lot of houses. And I can tell you, in 25 years, the number one question is always, "Okay, where are the best schools? I want a good school district." I'll have somebody looking for a townhome, a mansion, a fixer-upper, but no one has ever said, "I'd really like something in a subpar school district," or, "Get me a house where they're struggling, and we've got 35 kids in classrooms." So, in addition to all the wonderful things that have been said and that are the right reasons for you to support education, don't forget that in putting money into the teacher's hands, the school's hands, our children, you're putting money back into the pockets of every single property owner in this county. I want people to want to come to Gaston County because of the schools. Breaks my heart if we ever lose somebody because they think they have found a better school in another area, because they haven't. This is still the greatest place to live, the greatest place to go to school, and I thank you for supporting them.
Ms. McDuffie, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. Linda McDuffie, 102 Mirwood Road, Belmont. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening in support of the Gaston County Schools. I urge you to pass their operational and capital budget as requested. Simply put our children first and make education a priority. Six months ago, I started asking questions about the schools, as my twins are about to be school age, when I quickly realized they were underfunded and understaffed. As I continued to learn about the critical financial situation of the schools, I began to share what I was learning with others. Many offered stories of frustration. One example being from a parent of a fifth grader who had 31 students in his class this year. Average fifth grade classroom size for the district is 23, and the state average is 21. Yet, this child was in a classroom with 31 students. His mother said, quote, "There is a fundamental disconnect somewhere. Since my oldest started school, I have seen a decline in teachers and resources and a rise in frustration. I guess by this point, I feel discouraged and find it difficult to believe we can make a difference." 31 students in a classroom, in my opinion, is crowd control. In that particular classroom, each student would have two minutes of that teacher's time per hour. In a six-hour school day, each student would receive 12 minutes of individualized instruction. That's not long enough for a reading lesson or to explain a math problem. 12 minutes a day, one hour a week, four hours a month, and 40 hours a year, if my math is correct. The bottom line, that is not enough time to provide quality instruction for every student in that classroom and classrooms across the county. However, if that school and other schools added additional teachers, those numbers would dramatically change. And we know class size makes a huge difference in student achievement. But again, Gaston County Schools are underfunded and understaffed. From what I have learned, I understand that the past and present ills of the county's governing bodies has resulted in a lack of funding year after year and compromised our children's educations. As a citizen and parent, it is inconsequential to me where the blame lies, just that we move forward. More than a few people told me that I was wasting my time trying to advocate for school funding. One parent said, quote, "It will never change. It's just the way it is." Commissioners, I beg you, prove them wrong. Be the commission that acts in the best interest of our children, their educations, and this county's future. Be the commission known for restoring citizens' faith in local leadership. Do you know how influential that decision could be? You might never know how deeply you could impact the lives of students and this community. Be the commission who commits to change. For our county and our children, make education a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll come forward, Mr. Kellogg, and at this time, I'd like to call the last ten that have signed up. Roxanne Jimmison, David Pearson, Roger Insley, Catherine Roberts. Is Catherine Roberts here? Oh, there she is. Ann Russell. I think this is Eric Russell. I could be wrong. Charlie Martin. Crystal Stevens. Is Crystal Stevens here? Oh, there she is. Dot Guthrie. Dot is on the School Board. And School Board Member Chris Howell. We'll let Mr. Kellogg begin. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, County Commissioners. My name is Robert Kellogg. I reside at 1652 Lowell Bethesda Road here in Gastonia. I was going to say quite a bit, but I think after hearing what many of these folks here have said, I really don't have a whole lot to add. I do have two comments. One, I really want to thank you all for the work you do. I know it's not easy, and it's thankless, and, and people like me often call and complain about things, but I do want you to know that even though I complain at times, I really do appreciate the jobs you do, and I know it's very thankless at times. I had a conversation with one of you a couple of weeks ago, and we were talking about how you all sometimes receive the heat from what the state is doing in regards to the state budget. And I want to say to that individual, without naming who it was, that I appreciate that because there's some truth to that. There, there is what, you know, what you all can do on the county level, and you're responsible for that, but you are taking some heat for what Raleigh is doing. And I just want you to know that some of us understand that, and we are also giving Raleigh as much heat as, as we can. I, I would like to ask that you might consider doing something to help us in return. Let our lawmakers know what these people are saying tonight. I haven't seen many of our delegation from Gaston County at any town hall meetings or having any meetings to, to speak to these people, but as you inter, intermingle with them, as you talk to them, let them know about the teacher assistants who are worried, worried about this budget, which forces all of them into a very sticky situation. Let them know about the, the educators and the principals and the, and the teachers who are concerned about not only leaky roofs and, and air conditioners that don't work, but about schoolchildren who are being forced into classes that are way too large with teachers that are being stretched way too thin. So, if you could pass that on to our, our delegation, I would appreciate that. And maybe coming from you, they would have a town hall meeting and, and let these good folks express how they feel about the, the state budget and the state budget which is to come. The last thing I want to say to you all is that I would just encourage you to try to find more money for education. I know you're working on that. I appreciate that, but we really need to make it a priority, and it's time to not just make it words, but make it action. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Also, Robert, what, what we'll do is, Donna, when, if we can get a video, one of the DVDs of this meeting, if we could just send that with a letter to each of our delegation, even the federal level, and just say, "This was our budget meeting, and most of it was on education." If you could forward that on. Very good idea, Mr. Kellogg. Ms. Jimmison?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Roxanne Jimmison. I reside at 5000B Riverbed Lane in Cramerton, North Carolina. I am the current principal of Chapel Grove Elementary and the future principal of Lowell Elementary. I serve as our principal leadership team chairperson. So, you can imagine that I'm here tonight to ask you to support Gaston County School Budget Request. Of course, I'm a Gaston County School employee, but there's more to me than that. I am also a graduate of Gaston County Schools. I have been teaching or administrating in this system for the past 25 years. I have children who graduated from North Gaston High. My grandchildren attend Carr Elementary, so you can see I have a vested interest in Gaston County Schools. And because of my vested interest, I want what is best for our children and for my school community. And I know that you want the best for Gaston County and for the citizens of our county. You have tough decisions to make when it comes to your budget, and I have those tough decisions to make every day. And one thing that I always use when I'm making those decisions, I have a standard that I live by. I ask myself the question, what decision would you make, or what decision would you want made for your children? And so, I want to ask you that tonight. What would you, what decision would you make if it was for your own children or your grandchildren? Would you want the best teachers? I would. I want the best teachers in my classrooms. I want my grandchildren to have the best teachers. But as a principal, it is getting tougher and tougher to find a pool of teachers from which I want to hire. That pool of teachers with high-quality teacher candidates. Gaston County Schools wants to provide that. That's part of the budget request. And we would like for you to, to fund our budget so that we can increase teacher pay, so that we can attract highly qualified candidates to our teacher pool and provide our students with the best teachers. Would you want your Would you want your children to have the best access and the most current access to technology? I would. I want my grandchildren to have their hands on technology every day throughout the day. I want, I think you would want your children to have that as well. But here's the problem. This year, over the summer, I'm losing seventy-nine computers that will no longer be able to be functional this upcoming year. So how am I going to replace those computers and how am I going to continue to increase technology in my school? Only if you choose to fund our budget request. And then finally, would you want the best classrooms for your children? Would you want the best materials there? I do. I want it for my grandchildren. I want it for all children. I want my grandchildren to have a classroom that is filled with materials, that has a wide variety of book selection. I want them to have reading support from specialists, from teachers, and from teacher assistants that assures that they'll be on grade level by the end of second grade. I'm fortunate that at Chapel Grove, I can provide that kind of support because I have Title I funding.
If you could go ahead and wrap it up.
But when I move to Lowell, I will not have that funding. I will not be able to provide an additional teacher assistant or literacy teacher to struggling readers. And so I ask that you consider fully funding the Gaston County School budget and investing in our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jimmison.[706.23][706.23](APPLAUSE). Mr. David Pearson.
David Pearson, 4201 Graceway Drive, Crowder's Mountain Township. First of all, I'm not a teacher. I'm not married to a teacher, and none of my family members are teachers. I do, however, have three kids that are in Gaston County School System. One hopefully will be graduating Friday and moving on to the United States Marine Corps. As it stands right now, the county is losing highly qualified teachers to South Carolina and neighboring counties because of pay. South Carolina is not only actively recruiting our teachers, but they're paying them to become certified to teach in the state of South Carolina. The teacher turnover rate among first-to-nine-year teachers has skyrocketed because a nine-year Gaston County teacher making thirty-two thousand dollars can go to Cleveland County Schools right now and make forty-one thousand. For those of you who don't know, we do have numerous teachers that are on government assistance and financial aid. And I'm talking about food stamps and Section Eight housing, because unfortunately, the career that they chose in this county does not allow them to make their ends meet, not at the current time. Gaston County Schools cannot afford to cut any more than they've already been cut, and I challenge each of you to just pick a kindergarten, first, or second-grade class in any elementary school in this district and go sit and observe for just one hour, and then come back and tell me that it's still a good idea to cut assistant teachers. We need our staff. We need our teachers. We need our school resource officers to remain in place. And as a taxpayer, I'm telling you that I'm okay with raising taxes if that's what it takes. Thank you.[854.25][854.25](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Roger Ensley. I reside at 1708 Dixon Road in Gastonia, where there is no vision, the people perish. There is, however, a vision in the Gaston County School System, and we've heard some of that previously from some of the board members. In our system, there's a vision encompassing our thirty-two thousand students that are enrolled in fifty-five schools. The vision, as was mentioned earlier about the county and the county commissioners, is that our school system becomes the best. We want to be the best. We state that we are the best or we want to be the best. How it doesn't appear that everybody in the equation is part of that vision, shares the Specifically, I'm talking about controlling of the money, the commissioners. Here's a Roger Ensley quote. Where there is no money to support the vision, it becomes a pipe dream. We don't want our schools to become a pipe dream. We definitely want to buy into the vision. There are, while the schools are at the bottom, and I want to illustrate some of those points I was just making, but while Gaston County Schools are at the bottom of one hundred and fifteen districts in spending per pupil, our local level of funding from this body is in the bottom third of the one hundred and fifteen school districts. Now, over the past five years, our schools have been forced to cut thirty million dollars, six hundred jobs, and the children suffer. The children suffer. I'm reminded of Judges 210. Teach the children. Teach the children. And the children suffer when we don't put the Gaston County education budget at the top of the heap. It's the number-one priority. We need ten and a half million dollars, as laid out by Mr. Booker, for teacher raises. Folks are recruiting our teachers from all over the place. We need capital needs. Sixty percent of our schools are more than forty years old. I volunteer every day in Greer Middle School. It's sixty years old. And some of the facilities there, I would actually, I would invite you commissioners to hold hands with the board members and with Mr. Booker, and walk through those schools, tour those schools from an objective kind of perspective, and look at the condition that those facilities are in. I'll close with this by saying that my church, Parkwood Baptist, has adopted, Parkwood has adopted Sherwood and Greer, and we're making a meaningful impact. We're putting our resources from our church budget, from people who are volunteering. We're taking care of grounds. We're taking care of buildings. We've got a very active PTA and so on and so forth. And what I would ask of you, to please prevent our schools from becoming a pipe dream by fully funding the budget. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ensley.[1094.01][1094.01](APPLAUSE). Ms. Catherine Roberts.
Catherine Roberts, 255 Vermont Drive, Stanley. Chairman Philbeck and Commissioners, first of all, thank you for giving the public the opportunity to speak tonight. You've heard a lot, so I've kept mine short. I come to you tonight as a parent of two children in Gaston County Schools. My oldest will graduate Saturday, and my youngest will be in the eighth grade next year. Over the many years of having children in this school system, I have seen firsthand the effects of having teacher assistants in the elementary schools, and I've seen the disadvantages of not having them. I've seen the progress that my children made in the computer labs when they were available and up to date. I continue to see on a daily basis the struggles that my students go through with having to share textbooks, which results in students not being able to bring a book home for homework or to use it to prepare for tests. These are just a few examples of problems that could be corrected by funding the budget. It is my opinion that we should always start with problems inside the classroom and work our way out. Teacher salaries have been a hot topic in the news lately, and while it is the state's responsibility to pay our teachers, it is also the community's responsibility to show them appreciation. Supplements and teacher assistants are a great way for us to show them that we appreciate them taking on their ever-growing workload. Upgraded computer labs and textbooks will not only help the students, but also assist our teachers. It is my hope that education will soon be at the top of everyone's priority list in Gaston County. I ask that you please consider the voices of the parents, the students, the teachers, and the administration when making your final decision on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.[1203.33][1203.33](APPLAUSE). I need one of those, too.[1215.01][1215.01](LAUGHTER). There you go.[1217.01][1217.01](LAUGHTER). I need one of those.
Hello, my name is Annie Russell. I live at 23 Circle Drive, Belmont, and today I graduated from the fifth grade at Belmont Central. I am here to ask for increased funding for Gaston County Schools. As someone who spends a hundred and eighty days a year in the classroom, I know firsthand that they need more money. For example, we have a science lab, but we don't have the supplies to use it. Our teachers use their own money for classrooms and materials that should be provided. Even items as simple as paper were in short supply. The school doesn't have money for textbooks, and there is no paper to copy materials for us. Also, we have to copy our work onto notebook paper because we can't write in our workbooks since the school can't afford to replace them each year. It's hard to study from a sheet of answers when you don't have the questions. The school needs to be able to fund hands-on learning opportunities to make our work more meaningful. A lot of these programs were cut, like the field trip to Raleigh that taught students how the government works. I won't even go into the outdated facility issues that need to be fixed by modernizing our bathrooms. And the list goes on, but I have limited time. It is the kids like me that will become your doctors when our government manage our businesses. We may be the ones to cure cancer, to control pollution, and solve the world's problems, but we cannot do that without a good education. And without that, not only do we lose, our community loses as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.[1312.65][1312.65](APPLAUSE). Thank you. And that was wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Is it?
Erin.
Erin Russell.
That's hard to follow.[1320.65][1320.65](LAUGHTER).
Do you have a stool as well?
I have grew mine. I'm Erin Russell, 23 Circle Drive in Belmont. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. I spent most of my day doing research, some statistics on funding of schools, correlations on educational investment and economic growth, comparisons of our system with others. But as I prepared to come here tonight, I realized that the facts and figures that I looked up are readily available to you, and I think they've been covered tonight. So we all know the data's not good. Our schools, by comparison, are underfunded, and they're still overcrowded. And while we have pockets of excellence, the needs are great. And we, as citizens, are willing to pay for these needs, and that's what you need to know. I have not heard a person come up here and say they are against funding our schools. If they are not here to advocate for that, you need to listen to the people who are here. So I'm going to focus my remarks on the simple point. The people of this county support our public schools, and we want them fully funded. If we're going to budget by priority, the schools should be number one. The kids are our future and our biggest community asset. So as a parent, I ask you to fund our schools. As a lawyer working in the manufacturing sector, I ask you to support educating our future employees. And a person who has just sent my AARP card in the mail, unsolicited, (LAUGHTER), I ask you to give an outstanding education to the students who will be working to fund my social security and pay my benefits.[1414.13][1414.13](LAUGHTER). I've looked at this school budget request, and frankly, I'm surprised they didn't ask for more. I know they need the money, and I've seen that they don't waste what they get. So first, I ask you to fully fund the school's proposed budget. And second, I ask you to come to our schools. For some of you, it looks, no offense, but like it's been maybe a while since you've walked the halls as students.[1438.53][1438.53](LAUGHTER). So consider shadowing a teacher, spend a day with a custodian, man the desk with the school secretary. Come to my daughter's French class where the teacher is teaching three different classes at the same time, French III, French IV, and French V. Same classroom, same time. Come and watch her try to pull that off. Get to know our schools better. After all, they're kind of a major funding obligation of our community. Come and see close up that their needs are immediate and real. Thank you.[1470.01][1470.01](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Martin.
Good evening, Commissioner Philbeck and all the county commissioners. I'm Charlie Martin, 113 North Central Avenue in Belmont. And I was listening to all the teachers out here tonight, too. It was kind of funny. My sister was a second-grade teacher in New Jersey, and she had Lucky Luciano in her class, his daughter.[1483.33][1483.33](LAUGHTER). And she stayed alive after she got out of school, so got good grades. I have a son that's a school teacher and a daughter-in-law in Cabarrus County, and they have the same problem that we have here. When their ten-months runs out and stuff like that, mom and dad have to kind of pitch in and help a little bit. But one of the things I'm here for tonight is not only to try to help these folks out here that work so hard, but it's a lot of commitment to being a teacher, a lot, a lot of time and effort, grading papers, just so many different things. And I'm listening to all these people that speak, and they have a lot of issues, and I understand that. I'm sympathetic to that. But another issue that I have that I came to speak about is, I have three kids, grandkids over at Belmont Middle School. And I was at three assemblies the other day, and I'll tell you, that school's in rough shape. My mother-in-law went to school there.[1535.45][1535.45](LAUGHTER). That's how old that school is. Built in nineteen thirty-seven. Yeah. So, I mean, that tells you, you know, she was born in nineteen nineteen, so.[1545.65][1545.65](LAUGHTER). But it's a difficult thing when you have, when you're bringing people into the community like in Belmont. We need another middle school. That school's a very, very old school. There's room somewhere in our community to build a school that'd be up to date. Stewart Kramer's a beautiful school. I went to the grand opening on that. Absolutely lovely, and Kramer's is beautiful, too. The teaching environment is a lot better in those areas than it is in some of the schools that are older schools. And I will tell you that I think if you can commit to going ahead and asking or doing what these people are asking for, I think that would be great and the right thing to do. Thank you.[1587.73][1587.73](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Crystal Stevens.
Good evening, Commissioner Philbeck and Commissioners. My name is Crystal Stevens. I reside at 3749 T. Olive Drive. I'm a lifelong member of Gaston County. I'm a resident of Gaston County, and I'm a graduate of Gaston County Schools. I'm a business owner, property owner of many properties, and I'm a taxpayer. My son graduated from Ashbrook. My daughter is currently at Forest View. I have four godchildren, and I hope to have grandchildren in the near future. I am extremely concerned at the lack of support of our schools. Gaston County has over thirty-two thousand students enrolled. According to national standards, it takes over ten thousand dollars to send a child to public school for a year. Now, if my math is correct, that means that the school system would need a bare minimum of three hundred and forty million dollars. Last year, their budget was two hundred and fifty-three. North Carolina is ranked forty-sixth in the nation on per-student spending. Gaston County is ranked ninety-first in the state out of a hundred and fifteen school systems. Charlotte Mecklenburg, Cleveland County, Rutherford County, Union County, they all rank higher than we do on per-student spending. Even with less money, though, our graduation percentage is higher than any of those counties, and that's because of these teachers sitting out here.[1685.73][1685.73](APPLAUSE). I serve on the PTO at Forest View High School, and instead of using fundraisers for additional capital needs for the school, which is what PTOs are typically used for, this year, we had to give money to the science department just to purchase animals so that they could do their dissection for their AP class, science classes. Not all schools are as fortunate, financially fortunate, as Forest View. So what do those teachers and those students do? They either do without, or the teachers pay for it out of their meager salaries. If you look back four years, for the exception of last year, you have given the school system the same amount of money to operate. I don't know about you, but the price of everything has increased in the past four years. You can only make so many cuts before you start to see blood. I read in the paper that the county employees, including the seven of you, are getting a three percent raise. I cannot see how you justify giving yourself a raise while we're having school buildings in the shape that they are in, teachers leaving Gaston County by the droves. It is not only your responsibility as a taxing authority for Gaston County to fund school building maintenance, construction, capital reserves, and debt service payments, but to provide the following: salary supplements, properly fund AP and advanced courses, arts and languages- to see blood. I read in the paper that the county employees, including the seven of you, are getting a 3% raise. I cannot see how you justify giving yourself a raise while we having school buildings in the shape that they are in, teachers leaving Gaston County by the droves. It is not only your responsibility as a taxing authority for Gaston County to fund school building maintenance, construction, capital reserves, and debt service payments, but to provide the following: salary supplements, properly fund AP and advanced courses, arts and languages courses, and additional teachers and assistants. How can you think that you are doing the job that you are elected to do when you pass a flat budget for several years in a row? Just because the majority of you do not have children in Gaston County does not excuse you from your responsibility. You all talk about drawing business to Gaston County. It is a proven fact that the first thing that people ask about is the school system. If we don't bring our schools up to standard, we're going to continue to be a dying mill town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. School Board Member Doc Guthrie?
Good evening, Chairman Philbeck, Board of Commissioners, Gaston County Schools, family, parents, and concerned citizens. I am Dorothy Guthrie. I reside at 526 Shattaview Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina. I am an educator and have been for 38 years. I retired as Director of Student Support Services with Gaston County Schools. Currently, I work with the Clover School District as a school librarian, where the impact that we're making in educating our students has produced and been productive because of the necessary funds provided in order to unleash the full potential of our students in helping them realize their dream. Albert Einstein once said, and I quote, "We can't solve problems by using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them," end of quote. We can no longer provide our children with simple basics. Today, we must look beyond the three Rs: reading, writing, arithmetic. I was taught that. In his book, Schools Cannot Do It Alone, Jamie Volmer states, "Today, our curriculum must reflect the three Ts: thinking, technology, and teamwork." The decision that you make this evening regarding funding for Gaston County Schools will have an impact on student motivation and achievement. Now, I know that it's impossible to expect every teacher in our system to be a great motivational teacher. And I know that threatening or cajoling students will not keep them in school. But when we have funds to recruit highly qualified teachers and administrators for Gaston County Schools, this will help students understand the importance of learning. They help students care about the things they need to learn, and that was evidenced today at Warlick's graduation. I know that as leaders in Gaston County, that you have a stake in the performance of the schools, and that when they perform well, it satisfies us because we all want to see our children do well in our schools. And we expect our students to graduate, and we want to train them for the workforce so that they may compete for the best jobs available. In order to do this, we need great teachers with great skills, which means that we, as a district, must seek out the best that the academic institutions have trained. Thus, we, as a school district, must be competitive with salaries.
Ms. Guthrie?
And I think that little light's blinking for me. But I want to say one more thing. I have stood behind this dais many times as a recipient of some type of award because of the impact that I made on the lives of children here in Gaston County. And as I leave to take my seat, I challenge you commissioners to think about the impact of the decision that will be made by you tonight. Please, think about fully funding the Gaston County Schools budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chris Howe, who's also a Gaston County School Board Member. Thank you. Mr. Howe?
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman Philbeck, members of the Gaston County Commission. My name is Chris Howe, and I live at 205 Commodore Court in Belmont, and I am a current Gaston County Board of Education member at large. I have good news and bad news. Good news is I'm the last one. Bad news is I'm a pastor, and I like the mic. I want to first thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak tonight concerning the county's proposed budget as it relates to Gaston County Schools. I believe as a Gaston County School Board Member, I have several areas that I should concentrate on. The first is ensuring the staffing and retention of Gaston County School employees. The second is the facilities in which these employees and students work and learn. The third is the implementation and success of programs that allow Gaston County students to be competitive in all aspects of life, whether that be continuing on to a four-year college, a local community college, the military, or the current workforce. I understand that in order to accomplish these three items listed above with excellence, it takes several key factors. One, it takes funding. Two, it takes quality leadership and excellent employees. Three, it takes motivated students. And finally, it takes a community that is like-minded and a goal. I believe as a member of the Board of Education and as a parent, that we have three out of the four heading in the right direction. We have the team. We have the students, and we have a like-minded community. While some would argue over what the county's responsibility to fund, we know that the state only funds a basic and free education. An education that offers advanced courses, arts, and 21st-century opportunities requires additional funding. I believe that you want Gaston County to be a leader, and economic development depends not on good schools, but on great schools. I would also hope that you appreciate a Board of Education that is willing to do the same by not just providing a free education, but providing the best possible education in the state. I am not here tonight to haggle the numbers that we have submitted. I am not here tonight asking that, I am here tonight asking that before you vote on this budget, because time does remain, because you have till June 30th, that your board and the Board of Education sit down across the table from one another, examine the end goal, and then come up with an adequate solution. In 2013, Gaston County Schools ranked ninth in the state in average daily membership. That means that we are the ninth-largest school district in the state of North Carolina. In the same year, we ranked 109th in per-pupil funding by the state. That's pathetic. We ranked 81st in per-pupil funding by the federal government in the state, and 84th in per-pupil funding by the county. If we look at LEAs in either around us or that are the same size, we are getting beat. Union County is 20th, Cleveland County is 46th, and Cabarrus County is 64th. Mr. Chairman, we, your board and our board, have to keep the main thing the main thing: people and education. Without education, the crime rate goes up and the graduation rate goes down. Without education, the poverty and unemployment rate increases, and the success of Gaston County decreases. This issue can no longer be about politics and pride or egos and agendas. I believe that Gaston County Public Education is at a pivotal, yet opportunistic, point. We are either going to come together to climb a mountain that has yet been conquered, or we are going to begin a slow fall that results in an avalanche of wreckage that has scattered in its debris-filled students, families, dreams, and mischances of greatness. So, I ask the question tonight before you, my fellow board members, the citizens in this room, and those watching on home. Will you agree to meet with us to be educated and to educate before you make a decision on this budget? Finally, I would like to close with this. Benjamin Franklin once said, "If a man empties his purse into his head, no one can take it from him. An investment in knowledge always pays the highest return." Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. That is all that we have signed up for tonight. I want to just take a moment and say thank you to each and every person that came out. I think it's democracy at its best. I've been doing this long enough. I think other commissioners have. No matter what we do, someone's going to be happy and somebody's not. But I just want to thank you personally, and I think from the board, for taking the time to come out. And your comments matter, and taking the time to say what you say matters, and I want you to know that. So, at this time, are there any questions from the board or comments? Are there any questions or comments from the board? We're still in public hearing. Okay. With that said, the advertised public hearing has been heard. I'd like to thank you for your comments. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item of business is a closed session. Pursue it to General Statute 143-318-11A5 to instruct staff concerning the negotiation of the price in terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property located at Howe Dairy Road owned by Howe Farm Partners LLC and Kenneth L. Howe Sr. and others. At this time, do I hear a motion to go in closed session? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? We are now in closed session. At this time, I'll accept a motion to reenter open session. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? We are now back in open session. There was no action taken in closed session. Our next item is to consider the approval of agreements for purchase and sale of real property herein referred to as the Howe Dairy Site, Item A. I am the sponsor of that. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to table this for a later date to be determined. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is to consider the adoption of the FY 2015 Gaston County Budget. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the budget as presented by the county manager. I'll make the motion. I'll entertain a second, seconded by Commissioner Williams. At this time, is there any discussion? Commissioner Keger?
All right. I'm going to probably be a couple minutes, but I'll keep it as short as possible. Okay. All right. There are three issues I'm going to bring up. I think we're pretty set on the county, the government, and the day-to-day operations of all our departments. We've covered that pretty well. And what I just want to speak about for just a few minutes is the educational package, the school system, the college, and also a little bit about EDC and our debt situation. First and foremost, you know, the educators here, I know all too well what you go through. I've lived with teachers in my immediate family for about 42 years, so I've heard it all. I'm a former teacher myself, which many don't know, in the 70s, early 70s, I think. But that said, I do think that the longer I've served, the more I've come to have faith in the workings of others, as far as, I'm talking about the school board, the college board, the administration in both locations, our EDC. I just want to talk about the $1 million that's still proposed to come out of the school's operations and put into the capital. And I really believe everyone up here, and I'm not going to speak for you, but I really have a gut feeling that we would all like to see that stay whole. I do. I believe that. And I'm not just going to talk about these couple of issues, but I want to try to shed some light on how we might be able to deal with it without interrupting funding to other areas, not to affect the tax increase. But we are the majority of this board has already seen fit to add back $150,000 to the college for operations. And that said, we've cut, what was it, $244,000 a number of years ago in their capital, and we've still not put that back. And their needs for capital are just as important and critical as they are for the schools, and we are talking about transferring another $4 million or $3 million to the schools from operations to capital. I know it sounds confusing, but bear with me. Given that we are going to negotiate a new lease with Caramont Corporation, and we are going to have the findings of the new property revaluation by the end of the year, first of the year, and also, I'd like to take into consideration the amount of debt that we will be retiring over the next several years, say, the next three to four years. And I've sat down with staff last week, this week, and I've just tried to learn as well as I could what our restrictions would be, what the parameters of spending that money would be. And is Mr. Bradley, did he ever come in here? Is he still out somewhere in other areas? I may need him if he's around. But if we could find a way to leave that million dollars in the operations for the school without affecting the tax rate or cutting anywhere else, I would hope that this board might be receptive to that. We've given the schools the opportunity to utilize the 8.5 million, give or take, that wasn't spent on the projects that they've already undertook. And that's a lot of money. I'd be willing to bet that there's a possibility that the schools might not be able to spend that 8 million, plus the $3 million that we're taking out of operations, given the fact that they're going to have to work around school schedules. They're not going to be able to go in schools and redo roofings and carpet and things like that, heat and air conditioning units like schools in. So, I think that's going to be a big task to spend that much money. That said, that's just another reason why I think we could be able to leave that million dollars in there. In talking to Mr. Bradley, and could I ask him a question or two? Bill, in our discussions, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to have over the next several years probably $50 million, 50 to 60 million in retired debt that would be available to utilize in other projects, or?
Close to the $50 million, yes.
Okay. Okay. We know we're going to have that. We also know that for the last six, seven years, we've had a real healthy reversion back to the budget. Money's not spent in the current budget. I think we've gotten as much as 16, 18 million in past years. I know you hate speculating on that, but I think that we will see probably 6, 8, and 10 million again come back. We've got a lot of money in lapsed salaries. As Mr. Mathers stated earlier, we've got a fairly healthy fund balance. And as some of the speakers addressed tonight, let's do something now instead of waiting. And if we don't have to take money out of the fund balance to cover that 1 million, let it stay in operations. As I stated, they've got the 8.5 million, plus the $3 million that a majority of the board wants to redirect. Why can't we just leave that million in there for operations? Because if they lose that million, it's more than likely going to be personnel. Because if they lose that million, it's more than likely gonna be personnel. And we've heard about the need for assistance. They'll probably be cut to some extent. I don't know where else, I'm not a school board member, but given that and the fact that the state senate's budget, if it were adopted the way it's stated now, I think Gaston County could lose $7 million in operations, which, you know, what happens then? I know salaries is not the responsibility of the county board of commissioners, but we are asked to supply supplements. And we've addressed that to some extent. It's a minor amount, but I'm proud and happy that the board's able to do it, that the county funds will be there, and hopefully, as somebody stated, one of the school board members, we'll be able to match what the schools can put in there for the teacher supplement. But I just wanna throw that out to the other board members, you know, why would it be so harmful to allow them to keep that 1 million out of the four in operations? Because it will further hurt. It can't help. And I think, as we heard tonight, there's, you know, some pretty dire needs out there. And, you know, they are leaving to Clover and York County and Mecklenburg County. I know, I've said it before, my own daughter had to do it. And I hate that she had to leave here. She loved being here, and she's not so much in love where she is, over in Mecklenburg County. But Mr. Mathers, if we did not take that million out of operations and put in the capital, what am I missing? Is there, will there be, and I apologize for not asking you this earlier, be prepared, but what type of, will there be a negative effect on the county budget? In your opinion, anyhow? If we were to leave the million in that operations and not move it to capital?
Commissioner Kegger, there wouldn't be any net effect on the county budget. The effect would be on the schools' budget. They would have less in capital funding and more in operating funds. Without the million-dollar transfer from operating to capital, they would have remaining 1.2 million in capital as opposed to 2.2 million.
But then again, we are contributing, or allocating that 8.5 million for this year that they will have in addition to whatever capital's in our budget for them.
That's correct.
Mr. Bradley, you think that, and tell me if I'm off-base, do you think we'd have roughly $50 million to use that would not cost taxpayers added taxes over the next several years for the schools, the college, EDC, whatever we wanted to put that into?
No, the $50 million that I talked to you about was really authorized school bonds.
Okay.
We have $95 million of unissued bonds that we have authorization for up through November 2017.
Right.
We could use a portion of that. At our current debt level, right now, roughly $190 million, with the debt that's gonna be retired over the next three years, we could issue up to about $50 million.
Of school bond money?
Of the school bond money.
That would not cost taxpayers a tax increase?
Well, the principal amount will stay level. The only caveat would be what is interest rates gonna be in three years, three and a half years?
And that would be the only difference?
Yes, that would be the difference.
All right, well, I apologize for taking so long, but I would, before we have the final vote, ask the board to consider putting back that million in the operating, and if they could consider putting back the $244 after five years to the college capital. And with that said, I'm, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kegger. Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. I think we heard a lot tonight. There were a few, I think, misconceptions that I've written down a lot. We had a lot of people speak, you know, a lot of folks wanting to share their opinion. And again, I wanna clarify some things, and it sounds like there's still some confusion even from what we just heard about what this budget does. I've read articles in the paper, I've seen social media posts, gotten emails, as all this board has, phone calls, we heard a lot of people tonight saying everything from how the county commission is cutting $4 million, cutting $3 million, $2.8 million, $1 million. Even had a couple of folks say something about us, the county, cutting $30 million. And all I can speak to is the budgets I've been a part of. And since I've been elected, the budgets that have come to me, we have really done nothing but increased spending to the schools. We have increased school spending since I've been in office, and that, again, all I can speak to. Last year, we gave $1.2 million additional in operations. We gave an additional $1.2 million for technology, infrastructure, roofs, and things of that nature during the course of the year. I didn't see that in the budget here, but we gave that. Then, a month or two ago, we allocated an additional $8.5 million, as Commissioner Kegger just referenced. Not only that, as he just talked about, we've committed to giving up to $65 million over the next three years. So you stop me when we get to the cuts. I don't know where that's coming from. This board has talked about our priority, and I think there's certainly some discussion to be had as to what we're responsible for. And I think there's some good reasoning on both sides. And at the end of the day, we're responsible to educate our kids. I get that. And ultimately, that's what our goal needs to be. But the requirement that's spelled out for county government is to maintain the capital and to invest in infrastructure. And I think that's what we're trying to do. And I think we've recognized that we've put money in operations, but we've really probably neglected over time the amount of money we've put in capital. And I think if we looked at the CIP from the schools, we can see where that's obviously the case. There's a lot of needs that haven't been addressed over the course of the years, and now I think we're looking at $130 million in needs that the schools have. And a lot of teachers talked about it. We're talking about air conditioning that folks were talking about, made reference of, windows, roofs. Dr. Hoshak talked about bathrooms. I mean, there's a plethora of things that we need to address, and I just want the public to know, we are addressing those. And I think sometimes that gets lost. A lot of times, what government sees as a cut is different than what we see as a cut. You know, in our households, we see a cut one way. Government sees cuts as if you ask for 10 million and they give you 1 million, you cut their budget $9 million. That's not real life. So that's not the way we operate in our household. Another misconception that I heard about is how we rank, I heard a couple of different things, number 72 in per pupil spending, number 82 in per pupil spending, and some other things of that nature. If we use, I guess, the DPI standard, that's where we would be, but I think they leave out some important things that you don't take into consideration. If we look at the Association of Counties and the survey they have, I think we fare a lot better than a lot of people think. If we look at our county funding and what we do, you know what, I think we're actually still below average, but we're not near as bad as what some folks think we are. And I think we're actually faring better as far as what the county provides to our schools. So I think, I'd invite you to take a look at that survey that takes into consideration debt service, SROs, commissioner's school excellence, things of that nature, that I think this board contributes to education. So I think we should at least consider those things. I think this board has recognized the importance of teachers, and I think that's one reason that we agree that we should match the 1.5% of teacher supplements that we've talked about, and I think that's something that we can agree on, and hopefully, that'll happen. Our community stated that we want our school system to be a top-10 district in North Carolina. And I get that's gonna take money. That's gonna take a lot of money. But simply throwing money at the problem is not gonna fix it. And I think that's one thing that we need to take a look at, is government's way of fixing a problem is throwing money at it. Somebody said tonight, they made the statement that government has two options. They can cut spending, or they can increase taxes. Well, I used to have that mentality, but then you take a look at some things that, if you take a step back and say, okay, not cutting a budget, let's see if we can do some things differently. Mr. Dobbin stood up there earlier tonight and took away that our county commission, under a lot of heat and a lot of scrutiny, made the decision to combine DSS and the health department, and it's paying major dividends for our county. It's actually enhanced services to our community and made them more available, and it's saving us money. And we, so we really didn't cut a whole lot, we just found good, bold, innovative ways to do things differently. And I think that's what we miss sometimes in government. So I would actually challenge both boards to sit down and not just talk about more money, or less money, or any things of that nature, but what can we do to make government more efficient and make schools more efficient? What are some ways we can work collaboratively, whether it's parks, athletic facilities, libraries, anything like that? We're gonna have to create more partnerships moving forward, but I think both boards are gonna have to be willing to make tough decisions. Think outside the box and be innovative about how to move forward to make us that top-10 school district. I can assure you, this is all I can do. I can assure you that if that happens, if both boards are committed in a good-faith effort to doing that, I'll support future additional money, I'll support making tough decisions, and I'll support working together hand-in-hand with our school board. So I think those are things that we should consider moving forward. I'm very grateful for all the input that we got tonight. I think these are the people that are on the ground educating our children, and it was really refreshing to hear what they had to say. Another thing I wanna point out, as I kinda wrap this up, one thing I wanna point out is, it was talked about how we take the heat for a lot of things that happen in Raleigh. And I think that's actually extremely true. Our chairman, I know on multiple occasions, has said that our government liaison, we have made her available to Gaston County schools. We have said that, some of the board members have said, anything that we can do, we're available, and we wanna make our resources available in that way. And I think we should take it a step further. I think we should help you advocate for some of these things. I think they're very important, and I think we have to fix some of these things that happen at the state level. So I think moving forward, that's something that I'm willing to do. Mr. Chairman, I do plan to support this budget because I think it addresses our employees who haven't had a raise in a number of years, matching the teacher supplement, it's funding Gaston College. At the same time, it's not increasing our tax burden on our citizens. And what it does, I think, it prepares us for next year's priority-based budget, where we're gonna take a fresh look at every program, and I'm expecting some exciting changes. And I think we've invited the schools to participate in that with us if they want to. What I wanna make clear is, voting for the budget tonight, Mr. Howe said something about both boards meeting. I'm willing to meet with a good-faith effort from both boards, and I'm willing to amend our budget at any time if we can work together and find some common ground. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I wanna thank all the teachers and county workers and anybody who came out tonight. I wanna go back to something Commissioner Williams said as well. He talked about our budget woes and how, a lot of the good things in this budget. Commissioner Kegger and I differ on a couple of different things on, he wanted to use the bond money right away. I had talked to Superintendent Booker last time he spoke about new schools. Mr. Martin, Mayor Martin spoke tonight about Belmont Middle. I've spoken before about Stanley Middle, about that money needs to go to try to find a way to get some of the older schools refurbished, and that's what I would rather see the bond money used for, is my personal endeavors. Going to some of the things that happened tonight, and some, I think Robert Kellogg made a great statement by trying to get these woes to Raleigh. I think that's one of the things we have to really work on. I think, after reading the comments on social media, the paper, I think we don't do ourselves a service. I think we do ourselves a real big disservice. I think we came in tonight battling each other over where we wanted to be at the end of the day, rather than trying to work together. Mr. Howe, I commend you on working. I'll tell any board member here, I'll work with you any way I can for the future of it. I've been here before. Commissioner Williams, Phil Beck, Price, all of us have worked with you before, we're willing to do it right now. We'll sit down anytime to get that playing field wherever it needs to be, to be a top-10 community. And I'll tell you, as we go forward, we have to find a way to think outside the box of how we can get these things done. It's not gonna be done by the propaganda message that we got started on this budget. It's not gonna be by frozen salaries. We have nothing to do with frozen salaries. We haven't been able to start on that. There was a $30 million shortfall that the young lady had talked about tonight from Raleigh, the state funding. We don't get to pick up those pieces. We get to pick them up in short, small pieces, in 5 millions and flat budgets. That's why we have to pick them up, because we don't have that available to us. So what I say is, as we work forward to go to get there, let's work together, let's take the propaganda message together collectively to Raleigh, not in the papers, not here, as one board against each other, or one community against each other, because this is a county, and we have to work together. Until we start doing that, it's gonna be the same old thing every year. It's gonna keep continuing, a perpetual cycle of kicking this can down the road. And saying that, that's just my soapbox of saying, I wanna try to work with everybody together collectively. I support the supplements for the teachers and the 1.5 match. I support the college match that they asked for, and so I would support this budget, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the things that have already been said, but I do wanna say I appreciate the passion of all the speakers that came up here tonight. And although raising taxes doesn't seem to be an issue with most of the people in this room tonight, I can assure you, because if you'll remember, we did raise taxes last year. We raised it, what was it, 3.5 cent? And that was strictly just to pay for debt service on bond money that had already been issued. And, you know, I've heard a couple of speakers say, you know, the voters voted to raise the taxes, and yeah, and we did, but there's no reason to raise the taxes before the bonds were actually issued. Most of the bond money actually went to the new high school. And once that bond money was sold and issued, we did raise the taxes, you know, to cover that debt. And I know that we also represent, hello? Is that Joe?
Yeah. Pardon me, yes.
You're all right, buddy.
Okay. You get to me next.
We do represent everybody in the county, not just the people that are sitting here in this room. And I promise you, if we raise the tax rate to a dollar tonight to take care of another $10 million worth of funding, our emails and phones would get blown up tomorrow, and it wouldn't be a good thing. Not to say that if that's the right thing to do, I wouldn't support it. But where I stand tonight is, you know, I feel like the manager's presented a livable budget. I'm gonna give him the benefit of the doubt while he has time to get his feet firmly on the ground, and we have spent some time, quite a bit of time, in our planning sessions talking about this priority-based budget process for next year. And I feel like if there's any money... And I feel like if there's any money, any changes that are needed, this process will definitely bring that forward. And I look forward to going through that process. And one thing that hadn't been mentioned, you know, and it's been in the papers, we're really close to inking a deal with the hospital, I believe. It's going to be a lot fair lease agreement to the citizens of this county that own that hospital, own that property. And it would be my hope that this board would agree to use those additional funds when it happens, to help with the libraries that I know people are passionate about, and additional money going to the school system. I'm okay with spending every bit of that money on education and the libraries. And hopefully, the board would support that. I mean, you know, we're looking at another, hopefully, $1 million a year anyway. But for now, I'm going to vote to support the proposed budget with the changes that the other commissioners have already talked about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Fraley. Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to weigh in?
Okay, I think, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. Sorry, I coughed a while ago, but, you know, when you go through what I've been through today, it's kind of tough sitting here.
Hold on, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Carpenter had a kidney stone and cannot be here tonight. So he's calling in. And a medical procedure today, so thank you for calling in.
Yeah, okay. We've been through some tough times. And I think people's, first of all, let me say, I'm sorry I wasn't there to hear what everybody said. But I think our memories are short, that we have been through one heck of a downturn in the economy that's affecting everything that we do. And it's, I think our board's done pretty good in holding the line on our spending and trying to invest where it make the, we get the best good out of the taxpayers' dollars. I have for several years, many years, tried to get the school board to put more of their money into their maintenance. We're taking bond money and spending it on things that should be taken care of each year. And that's one reason I was supporting getting more money into the maintenance. And I just would plead with everybody that we try to do that. That's our number one responsibility, according to the state statutes. And I have supported getting more money into the maintenance part and quit spending it on bond money. That's just my finance and boring. It's just, it's not been the way I've been wanting to go. I'm going to support this budget, but at the same time, I think I'll work with everybody, as Mr. Williams says, to try to work through this, what I would call a transition time. And this coming year, we're going to look at priority-based budget, and hopefully, we can get everybody on the same track. And sorry for my groaning. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Okay, I'm going to make a couple of comments, and then we'll vote. And if it doesn't pass, we'll go from there. Over the past couple of weeks, I've seen many articles in the paper, Facebook messages, and really haven't received any emails. I did receive one email. I think we all did. It's the only one I received. I did talk to the gentleman. And I want to address some concerns. It was my hope that we could have a conversation, sit down and work together, and hopefully come up with something that we could both compromise and work on. I'm just giving my opinion. I don't really expect people that disagree with it to like it. But I think everyone else has had their say. They had their say in the papers, they've had their say on Facebook, they've brought a crowd in here. And I personally don't think a lot of people have all the information, in my opinion. And I want to address some of that, and I'll try to keep it short. First of all, I will agree with Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Carpenter. I think this whole board agrees. We're more than willing to sit down with the school board at a later date, full board together, their full board, our full board, and sit down and see where areas that we can move. And we can always amend a budget. And we do that all year long, the same way you do. So this is not something set in stone that this is it, we can't work together. We need to set a budget. I think we can work together moving forward. But I want to address some questions. Some of them, I think, are, I probably took a little personal. And some of them, I want to be clear at why I'm supporting keeping schools flat, and why I'm supporting moving a million from operations to capital. And I think it's important that the public knows why we believe what we believe. I respect each commissioner. I value their opinion. And I'll just start probably with this one. And this is probably more personal. I've had a couple emails, not emails, but articles in the paper and things of that nature, that talk about, well, you know, half of this board doesn't have kids in schools, and how can they really care about schools? Well, half the school board members don't have kids in school. The superintendent had kids in private school, up until a year before he became superintendent. So if that is the question, that we can't make decisions because we don't have kids in schools, then half the school board needs to resign. I just, I took that kind of personal, because I believe in America, we have, I believe in free choice. And I believe if you want to homeschool your kids, which I proudly do, or if you want to send your kids to public school, or you want to send your kids to private school, you should do that. And I have no problem with that. So I just wanted to make that clear, that I took that kind of personal, and I really didn't appreciate that. A lot of times, because we homeschool our children, we're constantly berated, degraded, and things of that nature. And I've about had enough of that. So I respect each parent's right to teach their kids how they want to. Second of all, a lot of, I'm going to read some comments that I heard tonight. And we're going to match those up with some past actions. Chairman Kenny Lutz came up and says, "Without funding, we cannot give teachers a raise." Ms. Duncan said she worries that teacher salaries are not competitive, and they do need an increase. I want to be very clear, I advocate for the 1.5 cent percent increase to teachers. And I think we should do that with the school board and match that. And this budget includes an increase in the supplement, even though we're not mandated to do that. Here's where I have a problem, and here's where I think it's disingenuous. In 2013, when teachers were getting nothing, if you'll go look up the Gazette, not all Gaston County school raises are equal. The top brass in Gaston County schools got 13% raises. 13% raises last year, while teachers got 1%. And I'll read them off. Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education went from $90,996 to $101,000. That's a 10% increase. Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services went from $88,000 to $100,000. That's a 13.64 increase. Not only that, one of the comment, and this is in the Gaston Gazette, you can look up the article, it is, "Not all Gaston County schools raises are equal." It was by Amanda Memmerick on March 22, 2013. One Gaston County school board, and I won't name them, says, "I don't think it's an increase. It's more of an adjustment that was out of place." So here's where I'm at. I support giving the teachers a raise. What I don't support is trying to make this board look bad, when last year, they could have took that money, helped teachers buy coffee paper, helped teachers buy supplies, and instead gave that to admin. That's a fact. You can look that up. So I want to just point that out. Second of all, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Williams, and myself met with the school board, not the whole board, but with members of the board. And we came up with a plan. I heard a lot of people talk about a plan. We came up with a plan. Some of our libraries are underutilized, okay? So we said, hey, why don't we just talk about this idea of maybe using some of our libraries, maybe closing a couple that are underutilized down, maybe use some of the public school libraries, and all the monies that we would save, we'll give to you. It seemed like a good idea. Then all of a sudden, amnesia came in, and people forgot about it. Let's move to, I think it was 2012, I could be wrong, Gaston County Schools contracted with the UNC Urban Institute for them to come in and tell them how they could be more efficient, where they could save dollars. The institute came in and said, hey, we found three schools that maybe if you close, because they're under capacity, or because there are a lot of issues that are affecting these schools, you could save close to $27 million. I think the operating side of those schools was right at $900,000 a year. When you add in the monies to keep up those schools and things of that nature, it added even more. From my understanding, there was never a vote on that. So I'm willing to work with the school board. I've called board members and didn't even get a call back. I've called one for three months and never got a call back. Maybe some folks say, well, you really shouldn't be that forward. You really shouldn't say that. Well, here's where I'm at. I care about education in this county. I own two businesses. Just for selfish motives of wanting rent high and to be able to work in people's yards, we need good quality schools. As a commissioner elected by all the citizens of this county, I want to make sure we have good schools. But turning around and just giving money where I see decisions that are passed on, it's okay to give these people raises at this time, keep it hush-hush, it really wasn't a big deal, it's just an adjustment, you shouldn't even say anything, these things are kicked down the road. We could give, in my opinion, $50 million today. But until you change the mindset of what we're doing, it's not going to change the outcome. I may never get elected again, and I'm fine with it. Because I'm willing to do the right thing. I'm willing to meet, I'm willing to work, I'm willing to do whatever it takes, whatever it takes. But in my experience, I've had a hard time working with this board. Not everyone, not every board member, but some won't even call me back, some you can't even have a conversation with. I'll take some responsibility for that. But I think that's a two-way street. Here's what I'm willing to do. I'm going to sit down, meet with anybody, to work on a plan to move forward. That's what we need. Until we do that, money's not going to fix that. And maybe that's not proper and politically correct. I could keep my mouth shut, vote on a budget, and move on. But that's stuff that needs to be said. We are going to have to work together and move past some of these differences. And you can't write all this stuff in the paper and line up all these people and make us look bad. We care about education too, just as much as you do. And I think you do too. The problem is, like Commissioner Brown said, I think we're in these little tit-for-tats. I don't want any of that. Just so you'll know, since 2009, we have not decreased education by one penny. By one penny. Last year, we gave 1.2 million, I know he said, Commissioner Williams said this, but I want to reiterate it, 1.2 million to Gaston County Schools. That's over and above the appropriated budget. That's an increase. $500,000 went to technology. The rest went to stadium repairs. We reallocated 8.5 million so that the schools could use it to repair schools. That's new money this year. Excuse me, it's not new money, but it's a new way to use it. Not only that, we do have a plan. We have a plan within the next three years to give Gaston County Schools $65 million. To me, all that addition doesn't equal subtraction. That's where I'm at. I'm willing to meet, I'm willing to work, but I'm going to call it like it is. And for me, I think some of the comments were out of line. I talked to two parents. Once I told them and gave them a different point of view, I didn't know that. I said, I didn't have a clue about that. I said, of course not. What you were told is, we're cutting education, we don't care about teachers. So flood the commission room, and that's just not the case. We care about teachers too. And we want to help the schools too. I'll leave it at that. If there's not any other comments, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the budget. I have the motion. There's a second. I'm going to take the vote. All in favor to approve the 2014-2015 Gaston County budget ordinance? All in favor? Any opposed? Five to two. Motion carries. Our next item is, I'll entertain a motion, I get Commissioner Fraley to authorize for tax collections. That is Item B.
You're just looking for a motion? Is that all you're looking for?
Yes.
I will make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Commissioner Brown, I assume is making the motion, order to levy and collect ad valorem tax for Gaston County Fire Service District.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is an order to levy and collect ad valorem tax for South Gastonia Fire Protection District. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is to order to levy and collect ad valorem tax for Longsholls Fire Protection District. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This concludes our special meeting for tonight. Our next regular meeting will be June 24. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone Air Clerk Donna Buffett, 866-3196, and share them. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.